This here.
Are you live? Did you push the button? The red button?
This is to advise that the notice of the time, date, location, to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserved as such, or similar announcements on February twenty thirty two thousand twenty four, transmitted to the Times, the Princeton Packet and West Windsor and Plainsboro News on February twenty third two thousand twenty four, filed with the township clerk on February twenty third two thousand twenty four. Sam, please call the roll.
Mr. Chiktel.
Sir.
Mr. Lovero. Mr. Shiktel.
Here.
Mr. Pankov. Mr. Beg. Ms. Bari. Ms. Applegate. Councilman Whitfield.
Yes, here.
Mayor Maratek. Vice Chairman Huberman.
Yes.
Chairman Karp.
Yes.
We have a quorum and both alternates can be seated.
Thank you. Next order of business. The notice of contract award to Burgess and Associates for a landscape architect. Ed Edward Snikus. That's how you pronounce it. Okay. I would have gotten it wrong. Um. Anybody have any questions, issues regarding the contract?
Just to start the comment, I'm assuming that's US dollar.
Yeah. Yeah, we should add. Currency there. It'll be Filipino pesos. It'll be twenty bucks an hour.
That's all I heard. It's ninety, by the way, one of the partners at a firm that never twenty five years. Planner, well, I gave architect. I did a fantastic job of everything.
Okay, um. Should take a roll on this or just all say aye? Okay, all in favor of the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Snikus.
Snikus.
Okay.
Jerry's here.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments. Three minutes per person, total of fifteen minutes on non-agenda or non-pending items. Does anybody have any comments they wish to step up to microphone? Okay, hearing none. Next. Okay, next up is minutes. December twentieth. Did everybody get the email from Sam asking for comments to be sent to him directly? And if so, did anybody have any comments that need to be or changes that need to be made?
I have.
Okay.
Just on. Minutes of January seventeen. Second page. Under the consent agenda, planning board attorney, that should be Mueller and Bailey rather than more offices, Gerald Martin.
Many. Take your time, you're okay.
Did you get that first one? Yeah, it's page three of the, I'm sorry, page two. Of the minutes of January seventeen, under the consent agenda, it says, planning board attorney, law offices of Gerald Muller, that should be changed to Muller and Bailey. And then the other change is on the closed session meeting. I would reword that one sentence to say, attorney Mueller reviewed the status of lawsuits with respect to three applications slash projects, so add lawsuits with respect to. And that's it.
Anybody else minutes? That was January seventeenth, Jerry was speaking about. And any changes to? The December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Hearing none of entertaining motion to accept the minutes from December twentieth, twenty, two thousand twenty-three.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Abstain.
Abstain. Two abstentions. You got that? The mayor seconded, so that's. Can he second it but not vote?
The mayor was there.
Okay. Okay, minutes accepted. We already talked about the Jan seventeen. Let me see if there's something in there. Any other changes besides what Jerry had for Jan seventeen? Entertainer motion to accept the Jan seventeen minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Curtis, second by the mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, two extensions. Anybody else, Sam? What? Okay. Um. February seventh, meeting minutes. Any changes, corrections, mods to that? Sam, I had something on there that, just to add some context, but I'll send, I'll send it to you, but on. Okay, I'll send this, but I just want to get on the record that on page three, where the middle of the page where it says Kevin Moore Esquire. I just want some context that Mr. Moore felt the calculations were inaccurate and that it was agreed upon, Mr. Kunsmann will go back, sharpen his pencil, get better calculations, and it became a condition of the approval. So I just want some context even there, even though it's recorded as such, I just, I'll give you a sentence or two and, like I said, send to Cindy and CCU. Okay. Got to remember to do it. If I forget to do it, just send me a reminder. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to.
Motion to approve with Michael's addition.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, Curtis, motion now and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extension? Okay, one extent. Got that, Sam? Okay. Great, thank you. Okay. Um. Was there, just before we move on, was there any change, other than Jerry's, changes to the closed session minutes? Um, any other changes to that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the closed session meeting minutes, February seventh. Moved by Alan, second.
Second.
Second by the mayor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, minutes accepted. Thank you. Okay, the highlight of the evening, application PB twenty-three dash oh seven Chick-fil-A preliminary final major site plan with sign waivers, three, four, nine, nine, US Route one, block seven, lot fifty-nine point oh two, property zone for B two district, M U L, M L U L, three thirty-one, twenty-four. Mary?
Mr. Chair, approval publication and service are in order at the Board's jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Duncan Prime. I'm a partner at the firm of Prime and Tubel with offices in Mount Laurel and Hackensack, the lovely state of New Jersey. I represent the applicant Chick-fil-A Inc. with reference to tonight's application. I think the board is familiar with the property. It's located at thirty-four ninety-nine US Route one at the intersection of Emmons Drive, that's also known as block seven, lot fifty-nine point oh two on your township tax map. As a bit of background before we dive in, in October of two thousand twenty, the overall site, our overall site, received a minor subdivision approval along with a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval from the Township Zoning Board, and that was for the development of two uses on the site. The front portion, the first use on the southeastern portion of the site, now known as lot fifty-nine point oh one, was approved to be developed with a five thousand five hundred eighty-five square foot Wawa convenience store with the sale of fuel. As the board may note, the site work has begun out at the Wawa and will be moving forward. The central portion of the site, now known as lot fifty-nine point oh two, was approved to be developed as a four-story Hyatt House Hotel. The hotel was to have a total area of approximately seventy-five thousand square feet and contain a hundred and twenty guest rooms total. However, since that approval, the land, the landowner has been working with my client, and in lieu of the previously approved hotel, we now present this board with an application for preliminary and final major site plan to instead construct a five thousand two hundred twenty-six square foot Chick-fil-A drive-through quick service restaurant. As our proposal does not contemplate or require any de-variance relief, jurisdiction of the application has been shifted as per permitted use from your zoning board to the planning board, which is why we're here before you tonight. As you'll hear in testimony, the interior of the restaurant will contain seats for indoor dining as well as two drive-through lanes which wrap around the building. We have, our professional will go through exactly how the drive-through lanes will work. Access to the site will be provided by a driveway along Emmons Drive as well as a shared access aisle with Wawa, Wawa's up the run. Finally, as you'll hear from our civil engineer and our professional planner, this application requires very minor design waiver relief, no variances. It is a almost completely conforming application. We've worked with the township staff at length in different TRC meetings, and we feel comfortable presenting a plan that is almost by right and certainly approvable here tonight. With that, let's introduce my first witness, John Martinez with the company Chick-fil-A. Mr. Mueller, would you like me to swear all my witnesses' ones? Would you?
Absolutely. If you could all raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth? So just one or from, you can go around, say your full name and spell your last name.
Vincent Kelly, K E L Y. Business address, one oh one Fall Creek Corner, Homedale, New Jersey. I've been licensed professional engineer almost five years now.
Your attorney will qualify you when it's time for you to. Yep, just getting this one in.
Good evening. John Martinez, M A R T I N E Z, Development Manager with Chick-fil-A. Business address, fifty-two hundred Buckingham Road, Atlanta, Georgia.
Good evening. Patrick Downey, D O W N E Y with the firm of Dynamic Traffic. Business address is nineteen oh four Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey.
Hello, Daniel Block, B L O C H, Colliers Engineering and Design, fifty-three Frontage Road, Clinton, New Jersey.
Thank you. Um, who would you like to?
First witness is going to be Mr. Martinez from the company Chick-fil-A.
Okay.
John, let's get it. Obviously, you're not a expert, but let's give you a little bit of your background.
So I've been a development manager in that role for about ten years at Chick-fil-A. But I've been associated with the company since two thousand and one, so twenty-three years. As you can tell from my accent, I'm not really from Georgia. I don't fool many people, so I live here in New Jersey, actually live in Nelson's, so I'm very familiar with this particular site. To think that I've been on this one for also thirty years. My role with Chick-fil-A is to assist in developing new sites. We've been looking at town of West Windsor for, God, been fifteen, twenty years. I've been involved with sites where, getting back to when National Building, which has started, you're looking over the air, adversity, so probably a half thousand sites, but I can tell you, you waited for the right site for us. And why that's the right site for us is it's a very large site, larger than we typically build. The site itself is almost three point eight acres. I bring to some of that as a new small, there's a website. But what that allows us to do, to put particularly a full-size Chick-fil-A with a proper amount of parking and drive-through capacity on the site without much town. So I've been tasked, I've tasked my team to make sure we come up with a site that moves to support the two planes. So real, real base, my engineer will get into it, but the site itself is soon as reached.
Mr. Mueller, we're going to mark this as A one. Would you like my engineer to come up and describe of the exhibit and prepare by the laws?
It'd be great.
All right. And what's your name and creation reference?
My name is Vincent Kelly. I'm a civil engineer. Can you provide a word with the district of your law patients? Sure, I graduated in two thousand eleven with a PhD in civil engineering. Been a license engineer going five years now, been testifying down the state ever since then. Before his license, at state, he has a venue that's located in York. And you prepare or assist in the preparation of the plant that is submitted to people that work currently.
Your licenses card in New Jersey? Okay, thank you. Anybody have any issues? Okay, so qualified.
Vincent, what are we looking at on the screen? What is this, Martinez? So what we're looking at on screen is the colorized landscaping plan and what it looks like once everything's built. So you can see a lot of the green space, you see the building position, you can see the parking, the drive-throughs, site campaigns, everything like that. And my, kind of walk through what the site will function and I'll find this out. All right, Martinez, we've got exhibit A one on the screen for you. So what I want to point out is a few highlights. So the building itself at fifteen hundred square feet has seventy-four seats inside, so we'll see. We'll also have about twenty seats outside, like small side, now we're done. But the thing you'll notice most about this kitchen is we increased the kitchen capacity. So since COVID, it really ramped up our building's, building's ability to process and produce food. So we have a state-of-the-art kitchen in this facility. Outside, we're providing seventy-three parking spaces. Now, for us, we provide sixty-seven parking spaces from day one. The ability for a few additional landing space spaces. And that's right in our wheelhouse, what we feel is as far as what we need. I realize that's one of the, it's one of the waivers that were actually slightly over your maximum parking allowance. But I want to make sure that when we provide, we open up, there is no potential overflow either out to the street or even to our neighbors. And I will say that we've felt quite a bit over the years with the Wawa. They're very comfortable with our use, especially with some of the groups we meet. One of the other things you'll notice on the site plan is that the staffing, our staff at the drive-through is extremely long. That staffing right there, I think it's over fifty cars from stacking a drive-through before we spill out into our own apartment, let alone packing anyone else. And to put it in perspective for you, if you're familiar with, I guess the closest Chick-fil-A here is the one I was built a couple of years ago down in Lawrence. That has about thirty cars. So this is literally fifty percent motion staff. Plus, the other thing I think is really important to note is that we have two drive-through lanes. When you come in, there'll be two orange stations, but they never merge. Those lanes do not merge. As I said, previously, you'd see them merge with one lane. This facility will not have pickup window, it has a drive-through door. So we actually, our team members will walk through it out to the cars either. And what that does, it allows for a lot more throughput to the facility. So I kind of demonstrated that to your staff, the ones at the TRCs, I sent them a video of one of these facilities that's in operation, have to be in a different state, where it shows how we can handle that amount of cars, safely have our team members out there. So we vetted that through our internal safety books. And we're actually in the process of building this facility. So we have a couple hundred of these facilities now. In New Jersey, we have a few of these facilities now are running. So the closest one here, I think, is Edison, New Jersey.
And what's the capacity? I was just there on Saturday. What's the capacity of cars that can go at Edison?
In the drive-through?
Yeah.
It's probably about in the thirties. That was our previous standard, it was in thirties. To here, we have fifty.
And in Hamilton Township, Marketplace?
So Hamilton Township is a great example of how Chick-fil-A evolves. So that particular store was the first store we ever built in New Jersey. That was built literally twenty-two years ago. And that was the old style. If you recall, the drive-throughs used to be kind of in the middle of the site, you had one-way flow around them. But that has literally the staffing there, that original facility was probably in ten or twelve cars.
And I know you're moving to another site in the same center.
We are.
How many stacking are you having there?
Yeah, so that, so to show, demonstrate Chick-fil-A's commitment, our business has been really good there, so we're actually taking a larger site.
Right.
I'm not personally working on this reinvestment project, but I've seen the plans and it's probably in the neighborhood of thirty or forty cars. I don't know the exact number on that. But I think it's important to demonstrate that that's Chick-fil-A's commitment. We don't just come in and build a store and walk away. We're committed to the community and to improve it where we can. Even a good example is Lawrence, right down the street. Two, two years or so it's been open. We have the ability to get some additional property next to work, TD Bank, which cannot be built. And so we're actually before Lawrence now with an obligation to expand our parking and our drive-through, we are giving someone the pass. So I just want to ensure that this facility here is being designed with all the bells and whistles. So beyond just the drive-through, I think the other important thing that is the ability for us to serve is what we call mobile customers. Mobile customers are ones that are either folks like us that order on our cell phone and chill out or third-party deliveries, you know, your Uber Eats, your DoorDash. One of the reasons why we want to make sure we have parking sufficient is because we anticipate that there's going to be a fair amount of Uber Eats. We're finding, just in New Jersey generally, that number is probably twenty, twenty-five percent of our business. So we want to make sure that this facility has that, we have proper capacity.
A follow-up question on that, operational. So when Uber, Uber Eats or DoorDash comes to make a pickup at Chick-fil-A, they have, it's not through the drive-through, they go to the counter, correct?
So.
Because everything's prepaid, right? So that's why I'm wondering, would there be a possibility that and that that would be a drive-through possibility or would it all be through the front counter?
You are on cutting edge of what we're looking to do here. I can absolutely answer that question. So so generally today, that operation happened with the individual parks. It's how their park comes inside, it's a separate entrance into the facility. We try and separate customers, sit-down customers from the Uber Eats and the DoorDash customers. And they would come in, check in, pick up their food, and then leave. We are experimenting with what we call mobile through. The ability that you can actually take one of the drive-through lanes, have it just for mobile orders. So you order off-site, and you show up on-site via geo-fencing, which I assume you know what that is, but what it is, it's, it can, you can have it in your phone, comes onto the property, start preparing the food, and you'd be able to actually prepare your food in the drive-through. It's, it's still kind of experimental in the sense that it's not rolled out everywhere just yet, but this facility will be built so that we'd be able to handle that.
But that's not part of your day one operations here in West Windsor?
That's not my, that's not my decision. So let me take a step back at how we actually operate.
So on that, it's just for Uber Eats or it's for anybody who orders? Is it just for Uber Eats or anybody who orders online?
Anybody.
Mobile order.
So the reason I can answer your question, so Chick-fil-A, even though corporately, we choose the site, we build against it, so the lease or purchase, when we're ready to open, we actually turn the store over to the operator, franchising. And that individual is not chosen until, or at least not announced, until we're ready to actually start going on construction. Chick-fil-A gets probably fifty, sixty thousand people a year that apply to come on. And of that, we narrow that down so somewhere about the people that geezer you. So very stiff selection process. That operator goes through extensive training, but that operator potentially could even be even an existing operator. Could be an operator that maybe grew up in this area and now is living in California. And they have an opportunity to come back to the community. So what we're really, what Chick-fil-A is really looking for is someone that's connected to this, this community. It's going to get involved with community, is going to support community, what's important to the community. Particularly operators, as you may or may not be aware, they all go support schools, literally parishes, whatever the importance of that community, senior activities. And so we'll go find that location. So that decision as to do they turn it on or off is made by that operator. What I can assure you is the facility itself will be equipped with the appropriate technology to have that.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get the number of cars that the stacking lane would accommodate. Did you say fifty or in the fifties?
Oh, it would be, it would be over fifty cars. My, my truck engineer gave me the exact number, but I know it's over fifty.
Then one other question on, on follow-up with Jerry. How does that compare to Chick-fil-A's in the rest of the state? It sounds, that's a very high number for stacking.
Yeah, so I can tell you, so I have two stores under construction right now, one of seventeen in Paramus and another one in forty-six in Paramus. That number right there is right in the middle of those two stores.
So please don't tell me that the traffic from Paramus will spill out onto Highway seventeen northbound, similar to Ramsey, New Jersey.
So that is why, and we designed it so that we have a very large site. So if you're familiar with Ramsey, that site is only about a little over an acre. The site we're doing on Seventeen is, if you're familiar with the Byron Place Restaurant. We're taking that, that's over two and a half acres. We certainly hope it's not. We have all a very, a lot riding.
Because I know some people in Ramsey are not too happy about the spill out as well as highway speeds of sixty-five miles per hour on Seventeen North.
I can't do anything about highway speeds, but.
No, but I'm saying it's not a safe situation. That's my point.
So, but I can assure you that that's why we're, we're just generally, we're fond of larger sites, and we're putting in facilities that we feel. I know some of the questions that your staff is going on, it was, overall, we've got about between ninety to a hundred team members that will be employed at the facility. But at any given time, that number is somewhere around the twenty-five. You will notice when we first open up, there's more, more team members there. We overstaff, in fact, we have a grand opening strategy where our first few weeks, we'll bring in a whole bunch of folks from around the country. Really seasoned individuals that can help train up on new teams. Our hours are very similar to, we see six, six-thirty in the morning to ten o'clock at night. Close on Sunday, so it's Monday through Saturday, so it's on Sundays. So they will be, will get similar to what we do in Los, we'll get deliveries that will come overnight. So we use, it's called key drop. So the facility closes, locked, truck pulls up, and it puts the food right into the, into the proper closet. Throws the food into the freezer, refrigerated in the refrigerator area. Throws the food into the freezer, refrigerated to the refrigerator area. Uh, now that's better. That occurs probably four to five times a week, depending store. We also have a trash pickup. Again, that happens in the mornings, usually about seven, nine, eight hours before the store goes busy. We are open for breakfast, but I'll tell you, that's probably the smallest part of, of, of our day. No one knows as far as breakfast is.
Drive-through operation, we're going to get into how the drive-through works in much more detail. Uh, any questions for Mr. Martinez? Can you just leave those hours on operations?
Oh, sure. Uh, say six in the morning to ten o'clock at night. It's Monday through Sunday.
Oh, I did research before tonight's meeting.
You're obviously getting done here, question to be taken unless we go.
Sure.
Good.
The last page was very big.
Were previous sworn involved by?
Yes.
Nope.
It's not on.
How about now?
Isn't the mic on the stand? Can you just take that up?
How about now?
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm gonna sit over there and go through a bunch of exhibits. If it will over there, I would.
Do you have hard copies of any of the exhibits?
Uh, not, not with me.
Okay.
That we can submit or send you directly.
Yeah.
Absolutely, Jerry.
A, a lot of these were submitted previously uh with, with the application. A few of them uh were kind of touched up and a few of them were kind of.
Is this particular one in your package?
No. Uh, the, it's black and white versions.
If, if you referencing one, something that came in the packet, can you just tell us the um?
We will.
Correct.
Page number. Thank you.
Lot of them, one of one.
Yeah, this is Vince Kelly, our civil engineer. This is gonna walk through uh site, overall site, existing conditions, post-condition. Uh, and each exhibit, let's go ahead, let's start with A one.
Uh, so this is gonna be A two. Uh, A two is the, is a comparison exhibit from the proposed Chick-fil-A and the, the previous hotel. Uh, it was prepared by my office. Uh, I believe it, it's hard to see the date, but I think it was uh updated uh ye- yesterday. Uh, just for some stuff. Uh, this exhibit was previously included in uh the package, uh but just a few, few items uh were touched up uh for, for greenwise. Um, so as stated, uh, the lot that we're uh taking over is fifty-nine oh two, which uh did receive uh preliminary and final uh along with a subdivision, and that's where uh lot fifty-nine oh two comes from. Uh, I know the board, I don't know if they're familiar with the site. I know it was underneath the zoning boards. I just want to provide some history on it, what the, the previous application looked like versus what, what we're dealing with uh here. Uh, so on the, the bottom of the screen, uh, it's a previous hotel. Uh, you could see the, the footprint itself is uh just slightly twenty-two thousand square feet. Uh, whereas the proposed Chick-fil-A uh is just slightly under uh fifty-four hundred square feet. Uh, as you could, you could see, uh, we are reducing impervious coverage, we're reducing uh the overall parking count. Uh, and what we're providing is, is more green space, uh specifically along M-inch drive. Uh, you could see the, the previous application with the hotel. Uh, received a variance uh for uh the setback and is basically along uh the main uh corridor right here. Whereas the Chick-fil-A is pushed more uh in the rear of the site. Uh, so as mentioned, we've been working with the, the professionals, I wouldn't say going on uh about a year now. Uh, application, the plan we presented only had the Chick-fil- Around Wawa's property. The site and had parking on, on both sides, basically. Uh, so after some back and forth, what you, what you see here is what everybody kind of came to terms with. Uh, and uh basically it just, it flipped everything a hundred and eighty degrees to, to rotate the building interior to the site, uh which provides an efficient functional layout for the, uh, the drive-through as well as uh the parking circulation. And what it uh allowed us to do was uh provide uh a, a large uh landscaping buffer along M-inch drive, uh which I'll get into a little bit, how, how we kind of screened everything uh a little, little later uh as I start talking about the site and everything. Um, as mentioned, we are in the B-two zone, which is the neighborhood uh central business district. The QSR is uh a permitted use along with the drive-through. We have complied, as you, as you heard, we don't have any variances. We have complied with all the, the bulk uh table setbacks uh in regards to building height, impervious coverage for ratio. We don't, we comply with all the setbacks. Uh, and then there's also two um requirements for the drive-through lanes themselves. Uh, so they, the drive-through needs to be set back from the property line thirty feet. Uh, so along M-inch drive, we, we actually exceed that. Uh, we're about thirty, thirty-seven and change. Uh, and then in the rear, um, where we back up to the, the multi-promotional property, southwest of us, uh, we provide the, the uh landscape buffer about thirty-two feet. Uh, so in essence, uh, you know, we, we comply with everything. We are asking for a few minor uh waivers. Uh, a few of them relate to the parking, some signage and a loading zone. So I'm gonna go back to A one, which is the, the colorized exhibit of the plan, kind of walk through the, the site circulation and uh access uh for the site and kind of how the, the, the drive-through functions itself. Uh, a little later, I do have some perspective views of what the drive-through looks like. Uh, and I'll kind of, I'll, I'll touch on this first. And then once I get through the perspective views, I'll, I'll, I'll retouch on that. So you could kind of get a general feel of how everything works. Um. So with, with the previous application, there were two uh curb cuts along M-inch drive. Uh, we are consolidating that into one curb cut, uh which you could see here. Uh, it's, it's a little bit, um, I would say on the, the northeast side of the property. With the developable areas, it's almost middle of the site. Uh, and then we are uh providing access from Route One uh via the Wawa's uh parcel as well. Uh, the same access from Route One from the previous application has been made uh to the same connection at Wawa. Uh, that obviously was a, a, a big uh driving factor, everything to make sure that the, the site circulation for Wawa and their operations still worked functionality for, for us as well. Um, you could see based on this plan, uh, we are increasing um the, the landscaping, which I'll get into the specifics a little bit later. Uh, that we're providing, you know, um, treescape along M-inch drive here, along with a, a buffer along M-inch drive. We are providing uh sidewalk access from both roadways as well. Uh, Wawa currently has a, a herringbone uh pavers in the rear of the property, uh, and they're gonna construct it up to the property line. We're gonna pick it up where, where they're stopping and, and bring it interior to the site. Uh, same thing with Emmens. Uh, we are providing a sidewalk access uh from M-inch drive and uh providing it crossing the drive-through here with some, you know, uh crosswalk and some wayfinding signs. So, you know, provides public safety. Uh, and then bringing uh everyone to in front, in front of the building. Uh, we also are providing uh bicycle racks. Uh, we understand, you know, there's a, uh, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the site. There's the apartments right down Emmens Road. Uh, so we positioned the bike rack uh to be on that side of the, the property, anticipating that that's most likely where uh bicycle traffic will come from in, instead of Route One, basically.
So, um, uh, is it appropriate to ask my wayfinding sign question at this point? Yes, no? Okay, so.
Sure.
Uh, uh, scenario.
Yes.
Uh, I'm coming down US Route One southbound. And I, I don't know to turn on Emmens Drive because I see the, the Chick-fil-A logo after I pass Emmens Drive on the monument sign.
Yep.
So I'm entering at the Wawa, past the Wawa, coming into the Chick-fil-A site. Please walk, uh, please tell me the wayfinding signs from entering off of US Route One.
Sure.
To get to the drive-through lane and where they're, where they are positioned.
Yes, hundred percent. Uh, I had a feeling you were gonna ask that question. Was a little later in my testimony, but happy to, to go over it.
Brought it up, so I, I, I rode with it.
That's fair, very fair. Uh, I just want, I have the uh, the site plan circled. I just want to make sure I identify where they exactly are and I'll even show you a picture of what they look like as well. Uh, so your scenario is coming off Route One, they make a right into Wawa, they continue in the, the northwest direction. They enter the Chick-fil-A property uh directly at this stop sign. So they're stopped, they're only allowed to go right. They're looking over their right-hand shoulder already. There is a sign right here in the landscaping island that has drive-through with a, a through arrow directing them to continue straight with obviously the Chick-fil-A at the bottom. They'll continue in the northeast direction uh towards Emmens Drive. They'll get to the next island, uh, which if you could kind of see my cursor, it's on the, the left. And also on the right, we have a drive-through with a, a left turn arrow that says, hey, the drive-through is to your left. And then as you, you, you turn down the, the northwest direction, you'll, you'll be presented with the drive-through that has the drive-through pavement markings. They have the, the clearance bar. You understand you are at the drive-through for the Chick-fil-A.
Thank you.
Now, taking, taking one as well, uh, coming into Emmens and this.
Coming off of them and same, same question.
Say, say, I, they're feeling you, same question and it relates to the same way. So coming in off Edmonds, uh, you will turn uh a, around the site, right in the first island, as well as in the same island where there's a left uh turn, they have uh a right turn into the drive-through.
Okay.
So we position those for that exact scenario. So people aren't driving all over the site. Uh, they have clear direction to get into the drive-through and, and get out. Uh, if you bear with me, I could show you exactly what they look like.
All right, so let's mark this. So previously submitted with the plan set, correct?
That, that is correct. Uh, this is the, the proposed signage package uh for the, the site. And the wayfinding signs are, look exactly like this. They.
Certainly, if you like, yep.
So exactly here, it's, it says drive-through and it gives you the direction and the, there's a, a small Chick-fil-A logo at the back. Not that you wouldn't understand where you are, uh, but that's, that's what we're looking at. Um.
And Duncan, I, this A three, that, that, that's in the.
In, in this mission.
Yes.
Yes, th- these are provided on one of the detail sheets. Uh, that actually brings me to one of the, the relief we're actually asking for. Uh, in the ordinance, um, I believe the uh, the max square footage for one of these type signs is two square feet. We're asking for a three square feet, just to enlarge it a little bit to really show people where it's actually going and, you know, ma- make a, a conscious deci- decision. Uh, it's a minimal increase. I think the, the added benefit of uh site circulation and safety uh kind of outweighs that. Good?
Thank you on that issue.
Okay, um, so piggybacking off of that, uh, let's say you do find your way to the, the drive-through. Uh, once you enter the drive-through, as was previously stated by Mr. Martinez, uh, you, you will enter either the right or left drive-through. And I'm gonna pick the right one for this scenario. Uh, you maintain uh your, your lane for the duration of your, your order. Uh, so when you make your order and actually get your food, you never merge back into uh either lane. Uh, so as you're driving counterclockwise of the site, you pull up to the, the first uh canopy, which is highlighted on, on the screen as a, a, a light brown hatch. Uh, this is the, the meal order canopy. Uh, during non, non-peak times, uh, they actually have, they, they have a traditional menu board. Uh, this is digital, uh, like that function like, like every other QSR you see. Uh, however, uh, during peak times, they do have team members out there with iPads taking orders, uh, everything like that. And it, and it really, um, gives them a, a, a chance to get the orders into the building a lot faster, process it, you know, cook the food uh quicker. Basically, uh, keep the drive-through moving, uh, as you will. Um, the canopy itself uh is really for the team members. It sits roughly uh feet high and uh it's basically just to get them out of the elements. You know, day, day like today will provide a, a lot of rain. Summer, even in the winter, it provides some shade. Uh, e- even in the winter and the summer, they have heaters and some fans under there. So it's not like it's just a physical structure. They're really thinking about their team members, making sure they, you know, they're comfortable. Um. What you kind of see in, in the drive-through as well is the, the middle of the, the lane and even this side of the uh drive-through with the canopy. It does have uh about three feet wide of striping and that's for team members to walk up and down and they're not kind of squeezed in between cars. Uh, so it gives, it gives them a little bit of safe place and a refuge area for that. So once they're, they're done placing their order, uh, the customers will continue in a uh counterclockwise fashion. Um, and then pull up to the next canopy, which is the meal delivery canopy. This canopy has the same function as the, the order canopy and equipped with the same, same stuff for uh heaters and fans and refuges area. Uh, and like Mr. Martinez uh indicated, th- this is where the deliveries happen. So team members will walk uh the food out to either car uh in either lane. And what that kind of does is um, it allows them to deliver food to, to more than one car at one time, basically. So year, years passed where they would merge in, uh, you'd have just one meeting point where all the, the deliveries would happen. Let's say you have a, somebody has a large uh order, you know, they have a few kids in the back. Uh, it's gonna take a, you know, an extra minute or two to, to prepare it. Uh, but let's say the, the car behind him is somebody like me, just coming home from a meeting like here. You know, I just grab a, a quick sandwich, something to drink on my drive home. Uh, basically what it allows to do is uh once the, the, deliver my food, let's say it takes another thirty seconds to deliver the car in front for the larger order. And then they'll also subsequently deliver the food to the car after and same thing for the other lane. So basically they, they could deliver instead of one car at one time and wait, they could deliver six times, six cars at one time. And then once everybody has their order, they could just move out in an orderly fashion and therefore you never really have a, a a cog in the, the drive-through lane and everything's continuously to flow uh smoothly. I'll be right there for, for any questions.
Oh, Daniel, uh, uh, circulation question, because you were talking about the circulation. Was, um, in your site explorations, was the idea of connecting to the site from the Wawa uh equivalent to the space between the gas canopy and the Wawa building going straight into your site? Us, where the, where you have a major two-way lane right next to the drive-through entrance. Was that explored at all?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, sure.
Yes.
I'm, I, this is above the Wawa.
Yep.
And if I draw a straight line, I'm going on to the site where you, your two-way lane is where the entrance is. Was, was there ever any exploration between doing a, a cross-through connection there, thinking of the customer that fills up for gas at the Wawa, but then wants to go through the drive-throughs at the Chick-fil-A?
Right. Uh, it's a great question. Uh, we, we did think of that. However, uh, the drive-through with the Chick-fil-A is obviously the busiest part of the, their operations. Really, Wawa, the busiest part is uh fueling positions as well. So we wanted knowing that, like Mr. Martinez says, we've worked with Wawa hand-in-hand on multiple sites. Really, you don't, you don't want point, a lot of points of conflict at your busiest points. Uh, so the gas canopy being busy, you don't want people shooting over trying to get a chicken sandwich and then vice versa, uh, be like, all right, I got my sandwich, let me get, get some gas before I head out there. You, you want a chance to kind of separate the, separate the two uses and that's kind of why we, we have everything funneled in, in the back over here. Uh, gives it, everybody a chance to kind of take a break, kind of, you know, re- reset and, you know, proceed in orderly fashion, if you will.
Getting into circulation, um. You have the banks, the parking spaces, you have fourteen of them and six of them basically would. And six of them basically would back out directly into your main entrance and exit.
Correct.
Think that is an accident waiting to happen.
So I'll, yeah, so this this is a good point. I'll I'll touch on the the parking as well. Um, so the the land banked, how you see it on the Wawa side. That is, so there's eight spaces there. Those those are going away, and that will be green space.
Well, that's for wow, I'm talking about for your site.
Right, so so we had, correct, so we have, we have six on our site. So as Mr. Martinez uh, indicated. We have seventy-three within our our parcel over here. Uh, however, it's not technically seventy-three spaces. Uh, three of them are EV, which are really like. Rarely used because they're kind of special vehicles until the the ti- kind of the times come up. And then the six spaces, so they're they're just land banked as is.
Well, my point is that if they were put into operation, they would be. I mean, as I said, they're an accident waiting to happen. Somebody backing out, you have cars coming in, cars coming out, that's the only way to get around. Practically. And I I don't think they they're appropriate. I think that should be removed from the plans.
So if if these were ever constructed, we could turn them into team member parking, so it's for staff members and it'd be a long duration.
I've seen team member parkings at Starbucks and things, and I ended up parking in the team parking space.
Okay.
People don't respect that. So I I really think that that should be removed.
Okay.
So similar to to Alan's concern, I'm concerned about the five spaces right at that entrance that we talked about, i- if uh. Where there's the five spaces there in this heavily circulated space right here. You know, that's that's a concern to me.
Yes, so tho- those five were were directed to be team mem- team member spaces as well.
Okay.
Uh, for the operator and, you know, that they have. Obviously, plenty of plenty of staff, um, so they they would direct their staff to park back here. So like I said. It'll be a long duration for turnover, it'd be basically at shift change, it's not high turnover, not really uh, marketed to come into the site.
Curtis.
Yeah, go ahead.
I I think the foot traffic is maximum in front of Wawa, so the entrance on this side is much better. I mean.
Okay.
You don't want a lot of cars driving in front of Wawa.
I I I. I guess there's a gut feeling I have that that's going to be a choke point. Um, especially for egress. I I know, I know we haven't talked about the traffic yet, and you guys could tell me to talk about it later. But with all that, with Chick-fil-A traffic leaving the site to go southbound on Route one. With Wawa traffic from both the canap- the gas operation and the convenience store operation, when it goes southbound on Route one. That southbound exit is going to get a good amount of use. And I I'm concerned about queues. Because uh, at certain times of the day, it might not be easy to make the right turn. Uh, onto Highway one south, yet. I know there that the dead, there is a dedicated lane there for right turn in, right turn out, uh, right turn in. An entrance uh, onto it, you know, so you have it easing there, but that, but you know, drivers still just go on it anyway.
Yeah, but.
Through.
But given how much foot traffic I've seen in front of Wawa, it's much better to not. Put more cars in front of that bu- building.
We will touch on that point with our. With track, thank you, thank you.
I I ha- I have my own hypothetical.
Go ahead.
On on. Foot traffic, but um, New Jersey being the only, I think the only state in the United States that's still does not have self-serve gas. Let's prevent somebody from pulling up, say, fill it up, run across the parking lot to get the the Chicken Filet Sandwich. To multitask.
It's discouraged, I know, just, yeah, I regret that Wawa as well, so I.
Cause that's something I would do.
Their attendance, their their attendance discourages that, obviously, if someone does it, not. Stop them, they'll tell them next time, people, again, it's.
Cause they.
Again, though, that same person could do the same thing and go into Wawa.
Right, they mobile ordered, and so they're fill it up and they run across to pick up their mobile order. Okay.
Good, you know, right? That that, and and to be honest, that that might be a quicker. Might be a quicker time to going into Wawa and spending fifteen minutes in there.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Sure.
Okay.
Okay, um. Alright, so next I'm I'm gonna kind of go over um. Site site circulation, uh, and I'm just gonna pull up the. Exhibits as well.
Yeah. Alright, Vince, we're up to A four.
So this is A four. This was also submitted in uh, in the package as well. Uh, this is the the delivery truck, does as mentioned, um, Chick-fil-A will be, you know, serviced uh, via a large tractor trailer. Uh.
In your.
Uh, thi- this was a an exhibit, it's not part of the actual site plan set, but it was part of the the overall submission. Correct, this is sheet one of three, and it is labeled uh, delivery truck circulation exhibit. Uh, so we we prepared both scenarios. Um, basically, uh, we, I guess worst case scenario is coming off Emmens Drive. Um, and just showing how they can navigate through the proposed site. Uh, so they will make a left into the site. Drive, circulate around the uh, the building. Park in the the front of the store between Wawa and Chick-fil-A. There's a a little dashed arrow uh, that shows where the the person will uh, deliver food into, which is one of the doors in the rear. Uh, so that that brings me to another waiver that we're requesting. Uh, per ordinance requirement, we need one loading zone. Uh, however, we're not proposing one. And that's basically due to the fact that loading operations occur overnight while the store is closed. Uh, so either either the 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 delivery truck driver has a copy of the keys, or it's in a lockbox and he has access to the code. Uh, and what they do is, you know, once they pull on to the site, they actually, um. You know, tur- obviously, they turn the truck off, so there's no idling. Uh, they even turn off uh, the refrigeration as well. Uh, for the loading operations, takes about forty-five to an hour. Uh, they hand they hand cart everything in. Uh, back at the building, and then you could see they they pull off site and uh, leave via Route one. Um, we're also.
So in this, in this plan, essentially, you can't have any cars parked. In the spaces.
Correct, and that won't be the case either. Uh, once the store is closed down, you know, obviously you can't dine there anymore, all the team members go home. So this this scenario where we're driving over parking stalls, there will be no cars in in the parking uh, whatsoever. Uh, the next exhibit is the fire truck circulation exhibit.
C five.
We'll call this A five. This was also submitted as part of the the submission package. Uh, again, it's it's showing um, worst case scenario, fire truck coming in off Emmens circulating. Uh, sorry, yes. So this is one one of one, and it's labeled fire truck circulation exhibit.
I'm just, I'm just gonna go back one second on, when you talked about delivery, I I am noting that you are asking for a variance. A waiver in regards to not having a loading.
Correct.
Okay. That's on their waiver request list.
Yes.
Here, this one. Fire truck. Yep.
Okay, everybody ready?
Yeah.
Alright, um, so similar to the delivery truck, they they pull off Emmens, circulate into the site. Uh, they're able to pull in front of the the building, uh, where there is a fire hydrant on. The the opposite of the building, the island right here. There also is a uh, FTC location on the building along with the Knox box. Uh, and once they're done, they'll they'll back out of the site and then leave Route one. Uh, this has been reviewed by uh, Tim Lynch, the the fire marshal. Uh, we satisfied all his comments, and you know, he he's he's good with our plan, he's re- recommended it for approval. So we have satisfied the the fire marshal with our configuration for how they will. Quite the fire show the building ever beyond, along with the the proposed hydrant, the the Knox box and uh, the FTC location.
Are there sprinklers in the restaurant?
There is, yes.
Okay.
The next exhibit I'm gonna go over is the the trash pickup. Uh, we'll call this A six. This was also included in the submission package. This is a one of one. It's a garbage truck circulation exhibit. Uh, so we we note that the fire truck most likely will come down at Emmens Drive. Uh, but yeah, uh, come down Emmens Drive, uh, circulate the the building. Uh, hit the the trash enclosure, um, and and then leave uh, via Emmens Drive as well. They do obviously do have the access to to leave Route one as well, but we were just showing worst case scenario. Um, the trash enclosure, as mentioned, uh, probably picked up around four four times a week. Uh, obviously, that can be increased as needed. That will be handled uh, one early morning, so as already mentioned, it's our least busiest time. Uh, and it shouldn't have any uh, conflicts with uh, any any folks that do actually choose to uh. Dine in for breakfast, and then the the dumpster itself on each side is large enough to accommodate both the the garbage and the recycling from from the facility. So each of them will have their own separate um, dumpster enclosure, it's like the. You know, if the garbage ever gets overflowed, or if somebody throws any um, recycling to it, they have their own separate bin, and anything's not kind of stacked at the bot- uh, the back of it, so you're not gonna. Really see anything. Um, I'll go kind of in into what, when I go over the perspective views of what the the site looks like, I'll show you what the uh, trash enclosure looks like. It's built with the the CMU wall, which is the the masonry brick. Um, you know, goes, I want to say about ten feet high, so you're you're never going to be able to see the dumpsters or anything like that. Uh, and then it's also finished with the brick, which is the same brick and color of the building, so everything will kind of match and blend in. Um. So I'm I'm gonna go back to A one, which is the the landscaping uh, plan. And kind of just touch on um, what what we're proposing with uh, this plan, and I'll kind of flip back to kind of what you see for the. The hotel side as well, um, as far as screening. So a- as we mentioned, um, the the site is reducing, you know, parking, reducing impervious overall, uh, and adding more green space. Uh, specifically to uh, Emmens Drive and, you know, conforming with the the setback and the buffer width that's that's there. Um. So as. What was kind of knocked down, um. I'm gonna grab my sheet so I can tell you exactly it. Uh. With the existing hotel that was previously developed, um. There there was a bunch of uh, trees along Emmens Drive. Now, with the demolition of that. The the canopy out here got cleared. Uh, so what we're looking to do is replace the canopy. Um. We're actually increasing the the number of trees along this. Roadway, uh, and what we're also doing along this roadway is providing a a a dense buffer screening. Um, from Emmens, so anybody driving along here, especially for the residents in in the. I would say nor- northwest of the site. Um, as you're driving along here, basically, you're not going to really see the drive-through operation. Uh, when I get to the perspective view, I've kind of, you'll see what how how dense it is and what we're looking at here. Um, and what we also did, uh, specifically where my cursor is, probably uh, just as you enter the drive-through. We do have a a transformer for electric, and uh, we have one of those top boxes, it's the the like the gray meter volt. Uh, what we're looking to do as well is is screen that from the roadway as well. So we we didn't put either of those utilities here so you could see it. We we made this uh, basically an oversized island, so we could kind of hide that, and then uh, additionally screen it a- as we're getting through. Um. So before I get into the the next thing, um. So one of the waivers we're we are requesting is is that. Per the ordinance requirement, uh, anything that's not a drivable area, so the drive-through and the parking pavement, uh, parking area for the. Uh, cars and the drive aisles, uh, supposed to be uh, pavers. Uh, however. Noting that, you know, Chick-fil-A is a little bit more popular than some other stores, we are looking to uh, make it full hardscape with concrete. Um, but we are, you know, um. Providing the the pavers in the rear that match what the the Wawa is proposing, and we're gonna connect it up into the drive-through. Uh, I will, I will tell you that the the hotel and Wawa received a a similar type waiver. Uh, for that, the the hotel basically stopped the pavers. Uh, at the building, but along along the building, uh, and around around it for the site circulation and uh, folks walking to and from. Uh, the hotel, and similar with Wawa around their building, uh, they got a si- uh, a similar type waiver. Uh, but what we are actually uh, doing on this plan, and it's kind of hard to say. Um. Give me a second, I'll kind of zoom into it. Uh. We are trying to match the the intent of the words. Uh, and what we're looking to do is provide a a little bit different color of uh, concrete along. The uh, face of the building, primarily where the the outdoor seating is, and where anybody can enter uh, the building. Uh, there's two doors on the front, and then one on the side where somebody can uh, enter. And what we're we're looking to do is kind of score that, so basically, you you cut the concrete to kind of give the impression of pavers, so it gi- gives. Kind of du- dual effort, basically. It gives you the the longevity of concrete and doesn't have settlement, or. I'm sure if you guys ever have pavers, some of them get loose, they they kind of get a little jagged. Uh, whereas concrete holds up over time, uh, but we are providing um. It to be installed in such a way that gives you what the I I feel the the ordinance was uh, intended for, and to give it a nice aesthetic pleasing, especially in the front of the building.
Maybe Ja- John mentioned this, but I I lost it. What's the quantity of outdoor seating?
Twenty.
Twenty?
You could see it on the the, say, plan left of the building, there there's four. Or there's three, four uh, high tops, and then there's a uh, four two-seaters along the face of the building. So that's. One of the waivers we're asking for as well. Um, but we feel we uh, you know, we we met the ordinance intent. Um.
And another uh, circulation question. Um, I noted at the bottom of your site plan. Um, still within your your, where the there was. Uh, five concerning parking spots are. I do see that you're doing a pedestrian connection to Windsor uh, Green Shopping Center.
Yes.
Has that, as of all the agreements, been worked out to achieve that?
Not not yet.
Not yet. Okay, cause I I don't, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't even know if Windsor Green has that type of sidewalk on their side.
We're showing it.
No, and I'm looking at parallel to the the bottom sight line, it looks like there's a uh, going uh, parallel.
I I think there's a connection out there now from the Wendy's to get over there when the when the hotel used to be there.
Right, so.
Well, yeah, but what what was it, uh, was it, it was a paved connection, and it was approved by both parties?
At that time it was. I know that the owner of the Windsor Green Shopping Center is fully aware of this application that's taking place.
And they haven't barked it back. Okay, fine, thanks.
Okay. Move on. Alright, um. The next next exhibit I'm gonna prepare uh, describe is the proposed lighting plan. And I'm actually gonna go to the the site plan sheets. And look for me. Um, this was part of the this middle package, it is part of the the site plan set.
This, and this is A seven.
Uh, A seven?
Yes. If it loads, I can tell you.
ES dash ES one. After the C series.
It's it's near the back.
After the uh, landscape series.
Doesn't load, I can, I can still talk about it. It's just easier to explain with. Doesn't load. I can, I can still talk about it. It's just easier to explain what the lighting levels out there.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, uh, so apparently it's not, it's not loading. Oh, here we go. Yes. Uh, so what we're attempting to look at is the, the proposed lighting, uh, for the development. It is part of the, the overall site plan set. I believe it's labeled EES one in, uh, the packet that you have. All right, um, I don't know if I should go with this one or the other one. Okay. So, so what we're, what we're looking to do here, um, we're proposing LED light fixtures. Uh, the light fixtures are 25 feet uh, in height for the poles. On the building, we do have LED fixtures as well. Uh, they're mounted roughly 10 feet, uh, tall. They're not really used for, uh, the, the lighting levels. They're more just, uh, lit just the, the walking distance, uh, around that area. So it's really just for the perimeter. It's not used for the, the overall scape of the, the plan. As well as the, the, the proposed canopies because team members will be walking, taking orders and delivering food. Uh, that does have LED fixtures as well. Let's see if it ever, ever loads. But, uh, the perimeter lights, uh, which are on the, the southwest, uh, the northwest, and then also along image drive. Uh, the, those lights have been designed as what they call forward throw lighting, uh, with back, back house side shields. Uh, so the light itself throws into, uh, the area that it's supposed to light. So it goes forward. And then in the rear of the, the fixture itself, uh, it has, uh, a fixture where it reduces the illumination for the unit, uh, to basically a few feet at behind it. But really what it does is when you're staring at the back of the, the fixture itself, you don't see the, the glare. So if you've ever been to a parking lot at night, kind of, you know, has that yellowy glow. When you're staring behind it, you don't see that. It basically looks like the, the darkness of night, basically. Uh, while providing aerial lit down below, but it doesn't in, impede anybody else behind it.
Basically downlights.
Thank you. Yes. That, that's basically what you have at, uh, around here. So there, there's a, there is a, two waivers that we're looking for, for these lights. Uh, and that's, uh, due to, uh, the ordinance requirement and, um, Chick-fil-A's operations. Uh, so the fir- the first, um, waiver that we're looking for, the max foot candle, uh, within the, the drive aisle and parking is 0.5. Uh, we're proposing 1.9, uh, as an average. Uh, and so 0.5 is the, is the max average. We're providing 1.9. Chick-fil-A's operation, um, you know, cause they're obviously a little bit more busier than other QSRs. They want to be adequately lit, uh, especially in the parking, um, where, you know, either, uh, team members are, are walking or customers are coming in, uh, as well as, uh, for the drive through as they circulate around. Again, especially for the, the team members, uh, that are walking through there. Uh, the second, um, waiver that we're looking for, uh, is due to the fact, uh, of these proposed lights at Eminence Drive. So the, there's two sections of the ordinance and they both kind of, uh, conflict each other. Uh, we're, we're asking for the waiver for the one that we, we feel is providing more of a public safety. Uh, so at the, any entrance, uh, of a curb cut, you need to provide, uh, a minimum of 3.0 foot candle, uh, which we're proposing. However, uh, the, there's another section of the ordinance that states that you can't exceed 1.0 foot candle at a property line. So in order to achieve, you know, three foot candle, we have to exceed one foot candle at the property line. And I just want to point out again, uh, that both the lights, uh, for Eminence Drive have been positioned to, um, be directed at each other. And again, with the, the forward throw downward lighting. And both of these have been equipped with the, the back house side shield. So if you're traveling on Emmett in either direction, you, you won't see the back of the fixture. You're just going to see the ground lit up below there. So it's, it's, it won't impede any drivers as they're, they're coming to or from the site, or if they're just, uh, passing by.
So at GDS two, you actually have the, uh, examples of the light fixtures. Can you run through them? Which ones you are actually using and where?
Great question. Um, yes. So I will. So I don't have the, I don't have the actual details with me.
It's the GDS two.
Yes, two. Yes. Uh, so ES two, I, I only clipped out a few, uh, on here. Um, I do know from memory, uh, so the, the little ones are the, the building lights.
That's the progress lights?
Yes. And then there is, uh, kind of rounded rectangular ones.
Yes, that's the Scottsdale Legacy.
Yes. So those are, uh, for the canopies underneath the canopies. And just so you know, those canopy lights don't hang down at all. They're, they're flush mounted. Yep. So you, you won't see those either.
So there's no glare.
Yeah, correct. There's no glare and they're directed again, uh, downwards. Um, and then the, the other ones are for the, the proposed, uh, fixtures. They have the, the looking heads on, uh, with the LED lights. Some of them are just called out to be different for the back house side shields. As you could see to cut down on the overall number of the fixtures, we, we have, uh, excuse me, three of them on the interior lots that provide 360, uh, light around. Again, that's the, to cut down on the overall number, knowing that it, it, it's adequately lit, uh, for everything.
And the, what color are they, is it going to be?
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, so the, a- all of the light fixtures, uh, are going to be a dark bronze. Uh, when I get through the perspective views, uh, you'll see it, it's the same color that's around the, the windows, the doors, uh, the color of the canopies. So everything will match and, and blend in. You're not going to, you're going to have a lot of uniformity. You're not going to be mixed matching colors.
And I take it the poles will also be browns?
That's correct. Everything poles and heads will be, uh, dark bronze. Got it. Um, so next I'm, I'm going to run through, uh, signage. So with the proposed development, we are, uh, proposing, uh, freestanding signage. Uh, we are asking for a waiver for the total number of freestanding signs. Each development is only permitted one freestanding sign. However, uh, kind of due to, to technicality, we're, we're getting, we're not uh, free signs, we're, we're basically getting a panel on the, the Wawa's sign that is going to get constructed. Obviously the, the previous hotel, it's the same square footage. It just now has a Chick-fil-A logo. Uh, but te- technically it's, it's another freestanding sign. Uh, and, and the reason we, we really, you know, need both is because of where we're positioned to, into, into, to the site. So we don't have any visibility or frontage along, uh, route one. So anybody traveling route one, we want to make sure they have enough time, uh, to make a, a clear, safe, conscious decision. If they're in the middle lane, like, oh, there's a Wawa and a Chick-fil-A coming up. I'm going to slow down, turn into that lane and either turn on Emmens. Or if they, if they don't make that in time, you know, at least they have the availability come through Wawa via route one. Uh, I'll, I'll show you what they, they also, uh, look like as well. If you give me a second, I'm going to go back to, this is A3, uh, which is a signage exhibit. This is, this is what the, the approved Wawa sign looks like. And Chick-fil-A is just, uh, providing the logo where the, the previous hotel was. Correct, A3.
I need to ask a context question.
Sure.
Can you swear David in please? David?
We have one, one, one and I swear in all our, our impressions at this point. If you could all raise your right hand. You swear. You swear affirm the testimony about to give you the truth. So it's one affirm. Just go around, just say your full name.
Dan Dobremski Township Landscape Architect.
Fazim Isoud Township Traffic Engineer.
Francis Guzik West Windsor Township Engineer.
So David, here's my context question from, uh, previously before the, uh, planning board, uh, we had the application of the Pep Boys and Advanced Auto Parts.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Is there monument, is there new monument sign also about 20 feet as per like number three on this display? Is it a much bigger sign or do you?
The Pep Boys Monument Sign? I would have to take a look.
Pep Boys Advanced Auto Parts.
Yeah, I could take a look in my, uh, reviews. I, I did not research that. I just looked up the monument sign that was previously approved for the hotel. That one I did research, but if you give me a moment, I can definitely find that Pep Boys sign or what was approved there.
Thank you.
The front, the front's route one though, right?
It's a, it's a pile. Thank you. It's a pylon sign. Now it's like, the, the new version of number three here for the planning board approved a Pep Boys signage change and advanced auto parts signage change on the site across Emmens from the Chick-fil-A Wawa site.
I can, uh, take a look. That was the SEMA application. Uh, but if you go on, I can find that information and get.
Let's, let's move along and, and pipe in when you find something. Thank you.
Okay. So in addition to, uh, having a panel sign, we are proposing a monument sign, uh, at the connection of, uh, image drive here. Um, so this monument sign is eight feet tall. Uh, the lower two half of it, it okay, hopefully it's only, um, provides a six feet tall sign which and the, uh, the community message board, um, that you just go back to kind of what it looks like for, so this is A3. So this is the, the proposed, um, sign. You could see the, the actual face of it's only six feet and we're providing, we're, we're looking to provide a two foot tall decorative base to give it some aesthetics. Uh, the, the message board itself, uh, is in relation to United States is that, you know, the, the local operator will be in, investing in the community. Uh, this message board isn't for Chick-fil-A itself. It's not promoting any, uh, any deals or specials that's going on. It's to highlight, um, things that are, are happening in the community.
And that's, that's manual letters, not a digital.
It is LED, but yes, they are, I believe they are manual. Thank you. Yes.
So what type of, for example?
Yeah, so. Yeah. So let's say they, they sponsor the local, uh, baseball team. They get a big win. Um, they'll, they'll highlight that. Let's say they're hosting like a daddy daughter date, uh, date night. Things, things of that nature. A- again, it's not business oriented. It's, it's to provide, uh, message to the community. Thank you. Correct. Uh, so, so with that, uh, we are, so in conjunction to the, uh, waiver for, uh, two, I guess monuments or fre- freestanding signs, if you will, uh, we're also asking for, uh, relief for the height of this sign. Uh, you could see we're proposing at eight feet. Like I said, um, two feet of it will be a decorative base below. Uh, the ordinance only permits a, a four foot high sign. Uh, but we, we feel that at eight feet, um, where we're positioned, uh, coming off route one and subsequently, uh, uh, along image drive. A taller sign will be, you'll be able to identify, uh, a little bit here, uh, and you know, gives you a good indication of where the actual curb cut, uh, is. Uh, if this sign didn't exist, you, you could blow past it. You could turn around in, uh, the apartments or, or somewhere else. So it, A, it identifies where, uh, you can access a site. Uh, and then B, you know, it g- it gives you a clear line of sight. Um, and then also because we are providing, uh, you know, dense bushes and trees in the middle of it. Uh, we want to make sure it's tall enough and it's, it's never going to be, um, you know, they're, they're very good at maintaining their sites, but make sure with the, the bushes and stuff like that, it has enough, uh, where it can stand out as well.
Curtis, to get back to your question, that pylon sign was actually not part of the Pep Boys application.
It wasn't?
No. So they had just swapped out the top panel, but that didn't require any type of.
That answers the question though.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but, uh, Sam, I have a question for you. Um, and this is from the exhibit. I thought he already was.
Testimony about to give you the truth.
I do.
A question for Sam. The, the sign, from the signage exhibit, you have these flag signs. Do, are there any township regulations on flag signs like this?
We do allow those in the redevelopment areas and their regulations on how often they can come up and come down.
In the redevelopment areas?
Yes.
Well, so is this, is this Wendy's sign as, as is on the highway?
It's, that's illegal. We've noticed them before in the past.
Thank you.
So they're basically on a temporary kind of basis.
They're not supposed to have it out there. My enforcement officer cites them all the time. Those, those type of signs that Wendy's puts out are not permitted. They get cited on a regular basis for, for that.
Maybe they'll just put them out during the congestion pricing campaign.
Proceed. Okay. Um, so that, that's all I have on, uh, freestanding sign. Uh, now with the, the building, we are proposing two signs as well. Uh, both of them are located in the, the northeast corner where my cursor is, uh, right above the main entrance door. And then there's also one on, um, the southeast side of the building that faces Wawa and, and route one here. So again, we are asking for, for some relief for, uh, the building signage. We're only permitted one building sign. Uh, we're obviously proposing two. Uh, we are not proposing two on the other sides of the building. Um, mostly because it really doesn't make sense because we back up to the other commercial portion. Uh, and you know, we have, uh, there's wetlands over here that are densely, uh, wooded as well. So we, we're not proposing any signage there. Um, but we are obviously proposing on the buil- uh, the building itself, uh, where it makes sense. And that's basically, uh, above the, the main entrance doors, uh, to the store. Uh, we're also asking for relief of, uh, 50 square feet. Uh, sorry, uh, we're asking relief because the max, uh, building square footage total is 50 square feet. Uh, we're asking 117. Each sign is, is the same and I'll, I'll just go to it so you can kind of see what it looks like. Uh, again, this is, uh, A3 and so signage exhibit. Uh, this is the proposed, uh, building sign, building signs. Uh, each of them are the same as a Chick, Chick-fil-A wall script, which you could see the, the chicken is also, uh, doubles the, as the, the logo. Each of them are 58.75 square feet. So if you total that up, that gets you to the 117. Uh, and then we're also asking for, uh, relief because the, the max, uh, letter height is 18 inches. Uh, we're, we're asking for, uh, 60 inches, which is really for the, the logo itself. Uh, and that, all of them are really kind of tied into, uh, where the visit, building is positioned. Uh, and that's the, the rear of the site. Uh, so again, you know, we, we want clear visibility, not just uh, but, uh, also to the building as well. So sure, the, you know, the, the building or the proposed freestanding sign, uh, identifies how to get into the site. The, the signs for the building kind of lets, uh, customers know where the front doors are once they get into the site. Uh, so each of them are positioned in a way where, uh, probably the most activity for the, the the building will take place. So I want to make sure that's lit for, for everybody to properly get into the building and they're not walking up and down the face of it.
I, I have a quick question regarding the letter height.
Sure.
So the, the C N is really the logo, right? Such as, right? And that's 60 inches tall. How high are the other letters about approximately? Half of that, 30 inches?
Uh, yeah, I would say probably, probably about half of that.
Half or less.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Of, of course, uh, be- besides, you know, uh, brand recognition. Let's just, so, so you see where it goes? Oh. Right. Of course. But once you get there, I, I mean, sure, I, I look at my dashboard with, uh, you know, Google or, or Waze or whatever. Um, but you know, I, I still paid attention to the roadway and not just full, fully fixated on the screen. Uh, 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 you know, internally illuminated light, uh, lit sign at night. You're going to see that and like, oh, I know where my destination is. I can ignore this and pay attention to actually getting in and out of the site. Fair question.
I, I have a question for you. You touched on buildings, but, um, I, I have a question for you. Um you touched on buildings, but um in terms of the canopy, the order point canopy.
Yes.
I'm looking at this and I don't know what I'm looking at. I see these round things underneath them. You got rectangular things hanging.
Sure. So that, that, that's a good segue. Uh how about I, I walk you through what the, the site perspectives uh, uh look like? Let me if you see it. There we go. Think we're up to A eight, right? Okay. So this is, this is A eight and this is a uh, a colorized version of what the, the building will look like as well as uh the. The proposed site as well as uh some landscaping. So you could really get a sense and feel of, you know, one, once this uh gets installed, what, what you'd be looking like uh out here. The, these were, yes. Um I, I think there's eleven sheets in total for A eight, just for clarification purposes. Um so the, 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 the top one, what you're looking at here uh is the, I guess, northwest corner of the building. So the wetlands. Uh and the, the commercial development are just plan right and then plan left as well. Uh so as you're entering the drive-through, you've already placed your order, you're approaching the, the building. This is what the, the building looks like. This is what the, the proposed canopy looks like. As I mentioned, everything is, is going to be dark, dark bronze. So everything kind of blends in. Um you could see both drive-through lanes with the, the striping in the, the middle for the team members to, to walk and safely deliver food. This is the, the drive-through door. I believe we have a, a little closer version of it.
So what's hanging off of the canopy?
Uh so that, that is, so the, yeah, so what's hanging off the canopies and it's not, it's, it's off to the side. It's not underneath the car. So the, the clearance for getting in there is nine feet. Uh but these do hang a little bit lower, uh but. What's that?
What are?
So tho- those are the fans and the heaters that I was uh referencing earlier. Uh this is where they're positioned. Um they are out of the, the drive lane where a vehicle will go uh as well.
Fans.
Fans and heaters.
Gotcha. Okay.
Uh the, the next sheet is just the, the uh, what the face of the building looks like. Uh you could see this is the proposed bike racks over here. Uh along with the, the EV chargers over here, the outdoor dining. Um this is where the.
And I do note in that perspective that I counted twenty-two seats, not twenty.
Okay, you, you got me on that one. So we're, we're proposing twen- twenty. Twenty, correct. I think, I think the architect who prepared this just got a little bit excited here. Uh added, added two more in there. Okay. Um so th- this is what uh the face of the building will look like. Uh uh once I get into the, the building materials a little bit as well, uh actually I'll get into those. At, at the last two sheets. Um this is again of what the, the drive-through delivery doors look like. Um you could see we're proposing landscaping. So you know, the, I know it's a commercial use behind it, but still, you know, if they don't feel like looking at um folks delivering food, uh there will be uh trees where, you know. Everything will be, basically be screened off for them. Um this is the, the drive-through door. This is another door access to the, the building. And this is where the other proposed building signage is as well. This is another look uh on the opposite side of the, the face of the building. Uh you could see where both uh proposed signage for the building is. Uh as well as obviously an island where the uh ADA stalls are and um the access to the face of the building. This is just another, the, another look of uh the EV and uh provided. Uh outdoor. Seating. Uh this is the meal order canopy. Uh so as I mentioned, um there will be two. Static uh menu boards for non uh peak times uh where cars will drive up. Uh like I mentioned during peak times, these are actually be powered down and then uh team members will be walking. Excuse me. In the striped area, uh ta- taking orders. Uh and this is a better, better look of what the fan and, and the heaters look like. Uh just, and again, it's just for team members. What they have found is that some people do get a little bit of heat when they roll their window down in the winter. That's just kind of an a- added benefit there. Uh but it's really just for uh team members.
Hey, you, you showed pictures of the EV charging stations?
Yes.
Are you actually installing them?
That's excellent question. Um yes, so these will be installed uh day one. Uh they, they have a, a national vendor that they uh use. Uh obviously, you know, since the mandate a couple of years ago, uh I would say like a year and a half, two years ago, we were kind of picking between certain vendors to use. But they have selected one. We've already accounted for them in our uh request for the electric company and these will be installed day one.
So are these EVs, uh are they universal or are they just the test ones or?
Universal.
Okay.
Yes. Uh so thi- this is the, uh this is along M inch drive. Uh you could kind of see what the, the screening uh that I was referencing. For the drive-through, the trash and where my mouse is and at the middle of the, the right two trees. You can't really see it, uh and that's a good thing. Uh but that's where we're proposing the, the uh transformer and the, the meters for the hot box. Um as you could see, this is the proposed monument sign um coming off Emmens. Uh and then this is the, the trash enclosure that I was uh indicating before. Uh we, we obviously positioned it in, in a way that um. At all angles, you're not going to see the face of the uh doors, basically. All you're going to see is, is, is brick uh configuration. That matches this, the, it's the same color and same brick that's going to be on the building as well. Uh this is uh coming off route one, uh going down Emmens towards the site. Uh you could see the, the screening that we're, we're proposing as well, uh along with the, the proposed monument sign to the connection to Emmens. Uh and again, you could, you could see what we're really uh going for and it's to, to screen some of the utilities and, and the drive-through aspect as well. Uh and that, that brings me to uh basically the, the color um specs of the building. Uh and I know there, and I'll share another exhibit as well that shows you what it looks like next to the proposed Wawa uh and how they, they kind of complement each other. So a- at the back, the, the last two sheets are uh what the proposed, the exterior elevations are. This is just a, a two D flat uh look at it. Uh you could see there's, there's two different colors. Uh it's a, it's a dark brown. Um. I, I would say uh and that's, that's, that is all brick and it's at the bottom half of uh the building. And then the top half ha- has a little bit more of a, a lighter uh brown as well. Um and it's, and it's consistent all, all around the uh, the building. So there's only multiple colors between the uh, the light and dark brown. The, the red for the uh proposed Chick-fil-A signage and then the dark bronze uh kind of finishes it off.
Should this be marked as an exhibit?
Uh it's a continue, if you want, we can mark it eight, eight, nine. Uh it's a.
Part of the same sheets as A.
Uh yeah, so there's the last two sheets of A eight. Um there's happening to be in there.
So the dark browns that you have on the sheet, that's going to be the same color as that of the light.
That's correct. Yep, and that's designed, so everything kind of bl- blends into each other. Um.
Was any consideration given to uh sunscreens or shading over the exterior dining area? As I observed in Edison, New Jersey?
His umbrellas. If you, uh I'll go back to.
There are the umbrellas. You're right, Michael, but I was thinking of the uh, uh other seating.
Um. If you. If you bear with me. Um I'm sure we could. Probably accommodate it. Uh usually it's for the ta- tables. Um obviously goes right in the center of the pole, usually with the two tabletops, a little harder kind of, kind of do.
Well, I, however, at Edison, New Jersey, it was more of a uh, help me out. Uh it was this more of a, a sunscreen.
Uh right.
On the, and that, that's another point though. Dan's making a good point too. We're on the north side of the building. Where it won't, in certain times of the day, get as much sunlight.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Um so I'm, we're going to mark this one A, A nine?
Yeah.
A nine. Uh and this is a Chick-fil-A Wawa color elevation comparison exhibit. Um and it's basically just a, a side by side of the, the other use that is, excuse me, uh under construction. Uh so you could see what they would basically would look like uh next to each other. Uh you could see they, they have the same kind of uh dark and light brown up top. Uh I know the, the uh, the Wawa itself always has brick at the bottom, very, very decorative look. Our building is brick as well, so similar uh materials. Uh and it just kind of, it, it kind of works out uh well that the Wawa sign is also red uh with the Chick-fil-A. So you're not going to have, you know, competing uh colors for signage as well. So collectively as the, the, the once uh formal parcel, uh you know, will, will be, uh you know. Working efficiently both for circulation, uh but as. Um I guess visual impacts and what it looks like. Thank you. Everything will kind of play, play off each other uh and you know, kind of make a well-rounded, comprehensive uh plan, basically. Um the last thing I'm just going to touch on, um as I've already indicated a few times, you are decreasing in previous coverage. Uh therefore, you know, we, we have met all the, the stormwater requirements, the township, township, the DRCC. The sore erosion as well as uh DEP as well. Um. So it's, it's, it's. Brain, brain age plant from my perspective.
On, on the detail sheet, the C eleven, you have the flag pole.
Oh. Um.
Or no.
I know there's no, but my question is, what is the actual flag side going to be on the pole?
So I know, I believe it, so the, the flag itself, uh I, I'm going back to A one. Uh it's in the, I guess, the, the side of the, the corner of the, the northeast and southeast portion in the island. The flagpole itself is going to be fifty feet tall. Um I'm also going from memory, but I think it's.
Two hundred and sixteen square feet.
Thank you.
Two hundred and sixteen square feet.
I'm sorry.
A dimension. What's the length and width?
I can get that. I'm not too sure what those dimensions are. Um. And just to clarify too, and this was uh completely on me, uh we had additionally, initially identified that flagpole as needing design waiver relief. Uh upon subsequent review of the regulations, it was brought to my attention that the definition of flag actually specifically includes national state county and municipal flags. And are not prohibited by the ordinance. So those fly, set, uh the flag standard design standards that we have. Don't actually apply if the sign is utilized for the state of New Jersey.
So somebody could come in and put up a hundred foot flag.
Yeah, as of right.
Are you serious?
As of right now, that's what your ordinance allows.
On route twenty-two.
It would be like a car dealership.
Like Route twenty-two, Route seventeen, Route four. Right now, there's nothing.
Flemington. Well, that's, that's why I'd like to get a handle on exactly.
What the dimensions are.
Well, are there restrictions on the size of the flag or the? No, so then. There's, unless the township's going to pass an ordinance regarding the size of the flag.
You just sent that memo out like yesterday.
Got to support the team.
As long as that team is specifically a state, county or national flag.
Okay, there you go.
All right, so. So the other question I have is, since you're going to be putting the American flag up there, do you have lighting for that?
Yes.
There's going to be lighting. How? Is it going to be from the bottom, the top, down?
Oh, yeah.
Um with the fifty foot pole, which is standard, we, we can eliminate that from the roof. Anything lower than that, ask me.
From the roof? So you're going to be having a floodlight going across to the.
Yeah, the, the, the building is only two months deep high. So the flag pole would be able to uh be illuminated from the roof without having a way. Did you notice the light?
Well, I. I, I have some doubts about that. Typically, you'd have it coming from the ground up, so you wouldn't have that kind of uh potential problem.
You'd see, you'd sort of see the source of that.
I'm sorry?
Here are bits on the roof. You won't see the source.
Well, the, the way they have them for the flag poles, I mean, you could have it in the ground going up. You could have it midway and it would be a basically decorative fixture on.
If, if there's a preference of more than, maybe certainly illuminated ground, it's just.
I, I think that would be. More preferable in terms of design and it would, uh wouldn't have any difficulty, but somebody complains that, you know, we're getting the light. Floodlight. It's just, I think a better.
How about, how about if they work with our landscape architect to figure something out?
Okay, what are you going to say?
Wealthy by eighteen feet.
So that's basically the side of it, but Andy got parking space.
Yeah, just about.
Yep.
Swearman.
That's fairly hard.
Okay, that's right.
Yes, it is. Uh so if this board wants the outside of this application, consider authorizing an ordinance to. Address that.
I mean, from my perspective, you could have people up in uh route one doing the same satisfaction, say fifty foot high. Uh like the.
Do, do, do we have any other flags?
Flag waving over route one.
Do you have any flags that size in town?
I, I don't know because they don't need a permit from my office to do that, so.
I don't have recollection of.
Yeah, it, it was very interesting because this is actually the first flagpole.
Right.
And that I've had a review in my five, six years with West Windsor so far. So it's not something that pops up often.
It wouldn't be triggered by a planning or zoning board review, so it wouldn't come for a public hearing on there.
But isn't there an ordinance regarding um structure height?
Well, the, the construction department would review it to make sure that it's, you know, you know, secure to the ground properly and so forth and whatever electricals need to illuminate the flag.
But, but in the ordinance, that's quite the same. You have height restrictions.
Yeah, but typically we don't apply those accessory structure limitations to signage, otherwise. Otherwise though, Alan, we would be making every monument sign go for a variance for being located in the front yard.
No, it's.
You have uh sheds in the backyards. You need height, there are height restrictions.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't consider a flagpole an accessory structure that would have to meet the setback requirement.
Well, so is the monument sign, but then why we, we, why don't we allow, why don't we require vantage leave for monument signs at our front yard? Because technically that would be an accessory structure located within the front yard area.
You're permitting it.
Yeah.
We don't require it for the charging stations for EVs either, especially for the Wawa here. The EV charging stations are in the front yard setback.
I would agree that there should be regulations put in place regarding these types of flagpoles.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I really believe that the height requirement basically should be met.
Well, if the board is interested, we have a council member who sits on the board. If the board wants to address that to the council representative, to bring it back to council to see if that's something they want to address, that can be done.
I have a couple of questions regarding the height. And um. We have, we have ordinances regarding um. Mobile antennas. I, I, I would like, like if this gets approved, I want the condition that no uh antennas or repeaters or anything go on top of this.
But, but yeah, that's fine, but it also antennas are allowed to be fifty-five feet in height in all districts. So an antenna or co-regulates. Antennas, not cell towers, but antennas. They can be fifty-five feet in height.
Right.
Cell towers, it depends on where they're at.
Right. I understand. Okay.
But. No, it is. It's a corporate company. Uh it's something you see at almost every location.
At every one of your locations.
Right, I, one other question. How close is, is the closest residence? And the reason why I ask is because a flag this size on a windy day makes a lot of noise when it, you know. Kind of like goes in and out of the wind.
I would say, Michael, it'd be the seminary housing in Woodmont.
It would be, you're looking at, actually be Woodstone. So if you take a left out of the site onto Emmens Drive. Go to the intersection of Wheeler Way, the nearest dwelling would probably be around.
It's like two thousand feet or something?
No, not quite that much. Uh around seven hundred and ten feet. That's measuring from the back of the old. Um old hotel there.
If it's going to make more noise than the ordinance allows for decibels, we'll have somebody from the health department go out and check that flag when it's blowing in the wind, Mike.
Michael, another question. Would it make more noise than the highway traffic on US route one?
That's, that's true. Okay.
The question I have is, you have to have it at fifty feet. It's going to be lower.
Prefer to keep it there? That's our, that's our preference. This company, our, it's our standard. I have the height.
Yeah, as a point of reference, if this was a corporate flag.
That wouldn't be allowed if it was a corporate.
They would be allowed a height of eighteen feet. If they do, they would require a waiver.
And you always have to fly the corporate flag below the American flag. That's, that's the rule. And you always have to fly the corporate flag below the American flag, that's, that's the rule.
It's also. Uh, that, uh, well, I don't know if there's any state laws or national laws, but typically signage is supposed to be content neutral, but that's the way your ordinance is written.
Like, if there's no ordinance to limit the size. Yeah, yeah, when it's not windy, it's, it's just hanging down.
So does that flag over Emmons Drive?
Okay. Maybe the township wants to take up, um, take that up.
I, I do have one more, so, um, uh, the parking area, there's the two E V spaces, correct? There's three, there's the two E B. Regular spaces by the E Vs, yet there's also the barrier-free spot to the right of that.
Correct.
Which can utilize the E V, but can it also just function as barrier-free parking alone?
There's, there's nothing stopping anybody from using it as barrier-free, uh, we do have, you know, code compliant. And uh, an easier access to the, to the main doors, um, but there is nothing stopping.
I'm thinking if the other, for some reason, if the other three, three spots are.
Right.
Two or three spots.
Yes, they can, they can definitely use this.
And without having to use the E V.
Correct, they don't have to, they don't even have to pretend to plug it in.
Because I, I, I saw on your parking scheme, you did not put the E V symbol on the barrier-free spot.
Correct, and that was to make sure that it was left alone for anybody that drives an E V that needs the.
Function.
Yeah, so the, the answer is yes, you could park in there if you're a regular passenger car, really, it, it restricts uh, some other E V. Uh, person using it that, you know, doesn't actually have the, the stick.
Were you gonna say something, David?
No, I was about to say, technically, I think pursuant to the state regulations and the township code. That ADA space is not required to be an E V space, that doesn't kick in until I believe it's over a hundred parking spaces.
But we, we. Or, yeah.
I have a quick question, um, regarding. The very bottom, very center, there's like a stop sign there. I saw it on one of the circulation exhibits.
Okay.
You, you know where I'm talking about the area?
Um, so, trying to help me with my mouse.
It would be in the, well, let's look at um, the garbage truck circulation plan. Uh, one of one or the, or, or the fire.
Okay.
In the middle, there's five spaces and there's a stop sign.
Right.
Ten, and then, I guess if you, if you went straight or something, you can then make a, um. A left-hand turn and get back onto Route one, you go into the. But is, is there a one-way, is it? Are you allowed to do that?
Which, which way, you're, you're saying back here?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, it. Like, there's a stop, this, there, right, but if you don't. That's kinda like you're making a right, if you went straight and you, and you passed through those parking spaces and get back onto uh, the road to Route one. Or is it blocked?
No, this is full of block.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, you know, there's a sidewalk with landscape and.
Those five, what about those five spaces? So you can't, you can't drive through there? Okay.
Okay, you know, go down, um, really, not gonna happen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Uh, yeah, I'm referencing like, instead of making that right and then stop, go straight through the employee parking spaces, get back on to like a road.
No.
Okay.
Michael, having looked at that, um, it makes me also wonder. Um, and, and this is gonna be outside your scope, but it's a concern in regards to the site. Uh, to the right of the five spaces, that's the um, the garbage area for Wawa, right? Am I correct in, in understanding the site?
Yeah.
To the right of those five spaces, going towards U S Route one. That looks like it's the garbage.
Yeah.
Space for Wawa. Do, do we remember uh, their hours of operation for that pickup? No limit, it's a twenty-four-seven use. So if they do a mid-afternoon pickup of trash, that's gonna be a traffic issue. Uh, in between the Chick-fil-A and the Wawa, am I correct? Okay, let's set that three rate, they do it pretty quick.
You can't drive from Wawa through those parking spaces into Chick-fil-A side, right? They're blocked?
No. So you, the only access from Wawa is, is the rear of the site, where they share a, a common drive aisle.
Okay.
That's the only place right where the stop sign is.
Correct, okay.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a question, um, those eight outdoor spaces. Um, which immediately chases the building, but they're overlooking a parking lot. Uh, is it possible to shift them into some landscaped area?
Whi- which, which part, these spaces?
The out, the eight. The eight, the, yep. I mean, if they're overlooking a parking lot, uh, is there a way that they can be shifted into a landscaped area?
Um. Yeah. Okay.
Debatable words there.
Sure, um, so I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering at University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, certified perpetual traffic operations engineer. And I've testified before in thousands of other venue boards throughout the state.
Licenses currently in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's correct. Quick overview of the site from the traffic department perspective, uh, starting outwardly, the adjacent roadway network. Will work our way interior to the interior site circulation. Starting with the site access points, as you heard before, relative to the approved hotel site plan, the driveways are being consolidated. From two separate T-intersection driveways to a single driveway opposite the driveway across the street. Uh, that's beneficial in the traffic safety perspective, reduces the total number of conflict points, and gives you one conventional light intersection. Instead of sequence of individual intersections. Um, moving on to the traffic study, somewhere we, uh, we submitted a traffic study to support the application. Uh, we projected traffic volumes for each of these uses, using the N J D O T approved rates. For the approved Wawa, approved hotel, and proposed Chick-fil-A. It's important to note for this Chick-fil-A, uh, it's a complimentary use to the Wawa, and there's the opportunity for customers to visit. A combination of uses, either the restaurant and the convenience, or the restaurant and fuel. It's also a convenience-based use, uh, that draws a lot of its customer base from the existing traffic lines passing the road. There's D O T approved methodologies for both of those factors, uh, that we can apply within our traffic support. We also perform traffic counts to establish existing conditions, uh, at our proposed site access point. Also, at the intersection to the east of Route one at Emmons, and the intersection to the west at Emmons and Goodway. Uh, and comparative operational efficiency of each of those intersections with and without this proposal project to assess the difference. Uh, what we found is that our proposed driveway is projected to operate at good levels of service. And there's little to no change in levels of service at any of the offsite intersections or through Wawa driveways resulting from those changes. Uh, so in our professional opinion, the traffic study demonstrates there's no undue traffic impact external from this property. Moving interior to the site, uh, talking about the layout, start with this drive-through. As you heard before, uh, this is dual drive-through configuration all the way through the system, including ordering and fulfillment. There's no merging until you get to the actual stoppage, you need a drive-through entirely. That's Chick-fil-A's preferred standard for new stores, they find it's more efficient, reduces wait times. And reducing wait times, getting people out of the queue faster is the best way we can control the queue length that builds up within the system. The actual size of it is also substantial, uh, as you heard before, we can stack over fifty vehicles, I counted it as fifty-two. We have uh, operational research data from a dozen or so other Chick-fil-A restaurants in New Jersey. And the peak average we see at the other restaurants is in the high twenties, quarter and thirty. So you have substantially more stacking capacity here than what we've seen in other locations. Uh, there's also significant overflow stacking available within the site, if it should ever be needed. That fifty-two is just within the concrete hatch drive-through lanes that you see, which would uh, terminate our internal parking lot, nowhere near the external. Terms of parking, as you heard before, we're actually seeking some relief for providing additional parking spaces. Uh, upfront, we're proposing to build sixty-seven with a contingency for six additional banks. The sixty-seven is right in line with Chick-fil-A's corporate standard for what they see for their new stores. Uh, it's important to note, they actually have additional team members compared to some of their competitors. I actually looked at the former Wawa application just for reference, and we have more employees on our site than their site, despite having a smaller building. Uh, and they have fuel operations to, to man as well, so that's the chief reason we're seeking additional parking. There's also industry standard data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers for fast food restaurants' drive-through. That uh, project a higher requirement for these types of uses than your ordinance requirement. So for both of those reasons, we're seeking the additional parking, uh, because we think it improves the efficiency of the site. Uh, loading, as you heard before, we're seeking relief for providing zero-loading spaces where one is required, that is because the tractor trailer deliveries occur overnight. It's ideal from our perspective, uh, in that there's no interaction between those delivery vehicles and customers. And the truck has free bring to the site to unload, uh, wherever it's most efficient. Lastly, I'll just touch briefly, uh, on our D O T component, we are obviously, uh, sharing access through the Wawa to U S Route one, which requires D O T. Uh, input, there was a previous access permit granted for the Wawa Intel Project. An updated permit will be sought for this change in use, uh, assuming a favorable action by this board this evening. And last thing I'll touch on is just the comment that was brought earlier regarding the location of the connection between Wawa and Chick-fil-A. I would certainly remind you to consider the proposed location, which is what was previously approved, the desired location. And that separates our peak activity, which is our drive-through, from Wawa's peak activity, uh, which is the gas. That northern aisle on the Wawa site is most likely the busiest aisle on any of their four sites, if we want to force all Chick-fil-A traffic to use that aisle. That's really all I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
You, Bonnie?
So, okay, here's a question. Okay, you originally showed, um, I guess it was se- uh, thirteen bank parking spaces. I'm sorry, fourteen? So you're removing, I guess, seven from the Wawa side? And you're keeping six on the, on your side?
So, yeah, there's a little bit of confusion in that that central double-loaded uh, parking aisle. The ones facing the Chick-fil-A site are the ones we're considering as associated with the Chick-fil-A operation. There are six banks on that side, and if memory serves, there's eight banks facing the Wawa.
And that's not your property?
Uh, it is in our property, but primarily in terms of serving Wawa's operations, since it's a mixed-use site overall.
Alright, so I'm looking at this, this entrance way, which I have to tell you, I've never seen anything so poorly designed. It's so convoluted, you have, when you're exiting through that entrance. You have a ninety-degree, uh, uh, turn, uh, but it's sort of like. That's not the way people drive. You know, you're not gonna go up to the point, and then make a left, and then go around. You're more fluid in terms of the movement, yet your curving is very deceptive in terms of. Well, this is the way, this is what I should be following, I think it's. I think it's very poor.
And there's, there's no striping.
Uh, again, there, there isn't any striping, but again, more importantly, as I said before. I think those six bank parking spaces are a hazard. If you want to have six spaces, you have an island, um. Directly across from us, you could possibly put in some. You have right in front of Chick-fil-A, you could put in at least three or four. But that is very bad, and you're combi- combining it with this very convoluted turn. It actually reminds me of the very poor intersection on the adjacent property at the side of Marshalls. When you're coming in by, uh, the A one, um. Uh, limousine service, you're coming down, and you're, you have a stop sign from one point. The other side, there's no stop sign, and again, it's going into a ninety-degree, uh, situation. I think that really has to be looked at, and I really think you have to, you really need those six spaces. You can find them, or you could bank them in other places.
So I can address both of those items, uh, first one was the layout of the, the actual access driveway. Um, and that was a challenging layout for a few reasons. First, uh, what really drove the hell out of the site was the location of the building and the drive-through lanes. We worked through a number of different options with your professionals, and so along this being the preferred layout in terms of the actual operation of the site. So that left us with this uh, north-south aisle on the eastern side of our property. And in an ideal world, that would be a straight shot up to Emmons.
Exactly.
The issue is, that creates, in our opinion, a much less safe condition at Emmons Drive. Because now you have a new T-intersection that's essentially directly adjacent to the Wawa driveway. And directly offset from your driveway across the street. So from an Emmons Drive perspective, it wants to be aligned directly where it is opposite their driveway. Uh, we did our best to smooth out the, the route between the two, we worked with the fire officials to add some additional, um. So curb, dark sloped curb on some of the turning radius, in case the larger vehicles should need to help it.
Yeah.
But we did our best, and I think the striping through that area, centerline striping is a good suggestion. Uh, we would be happy to add that as well, although we need that to be proper side.
Again, I, I really think that you should just curve your, you basically should put the curbing all on the curb, so that you're coming. Uh, if you take a look at the, um, the garbage, uh, thing, you have a, uh, the, the movement of the, uh, garbage truck. So if you were to curb that area, I think that would be much smoother. Rather than the ninety degrees.
Is this the plane you were referring to, the garbage truck?
Yes. So you see the movement of the garbage truck at the, uh, at that, um, at the entrance way?
Coming in.
Well, you're coming in, and then you see the curve at that angle. At the, where the curves angle, let me just.
Yeah.
Oh, that, and you're lying here with the curbing, that would be much better.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, you're saying widen the drive aisle in the location of the six bank spaces? Smooth this out, right, this, this is really being controlled by the interior radius here, uh, we don't want this to come to an acute angle. To smooth it out further, because this right turn to get to the drive-through, because the main move is gonna be a lot more challenging. I mean, we're certainly happy to work further with your professionals to smooth out that entrance way, um, we hear your concern, we think there's a workable solution in there, so. That would please the board, we're happy to work with it further.
I, I, I think that there has to be, let's have, and again, I think that the bank parking spaces have to be removed.
Right, so that was the second part of your question I didn't address yet, um, in terms of the bank parking spaces, again, upfront, we're only proposing the sixty-seven. Because that's what we feel we need, uh, we just want the contingency to add those if they were necessary. They are certainly the least desirable parking spaces on the site, uh, they would absolutely be restricted to team members only. I don't think customers would choose to park there if they had another option anyway.
Again, there are alternatives to those spaces, if you need the six bank, you can put them in front of the Chick-fil-A. Uh, the side, the side of it.
The east side of the Chick-fil-A, um, couple, I would consider that a worse location, simply because it's right where a drive-through exits. And it's where the Route one traffic enters, that's probably one of the busier locations on our site.
Well. I disagree with you on that point, I think this is a more critical up here.
Can I ask a question, Lukasi? From traffic safety point of view, isn't it easier if you break, make somebody stop and turn right rather than just let them fly through? He's, he's, he's saying a stop sign and turn right rather than just giving a straight road to Emmons Drive. Right, so from traffic safety point of view, isn't it better if somebody has to stop and turn rather than just have a straight road? Right? So from traffic safety point of view, isn't it better if somebody has to stop and turn rather than just have a straight road?
I think the state, the way it's proposed right now, it's, it's, I don't see any, any reason for being an unsafety here, unsafe.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason for the proposed design being unsafe.
Well, I disagree with you on that point. Um but another alternative location for the bank parking uh would be next to the trash enclosure. If you could line it up there.
Yeah, I think that's where we have a transformer and hotbox. Is that the space you're referring to?
Well, I don't see the transformer and the hotbox on my plan, so I don't know, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna flip over there again. So right here, I believe is where you're referring to. We just had utility structures in that area.
I'm sorry?
Oh, yes, yes. Yep.
And that's where your hotbox is?
That's correct.
That's a uh, it can't be moved to another site, it's not here.
I would defer to our engineer to answer that specifically.
As a transformer in that location, so it would be screen. The only alternative that we can move it would be closer to Emmens. Due to restrictions they've done by our company, they have certain distance requirements from the main to where their meters are. So we felt with a better position to put it in front of the lane and provide screening so you don't see any and, you know, uh an ugly structure if you will.
And you couldn't put screening in that area along Edmund's Drive either? If you were to move the hotbox there, yes, the water main is in the middle of the street.
Have a better, you have a better chance of seeing it if it's closer to Emmens than if it was flipped internally. So again, we, we felt it was a better spot to locate it um for functional purposes and and screen. We didn't have any, you know, comments with the professionals on it, anything like that.
And that, that's fine, but that's why we have a planning board also. So we listen to our professionals. We have our own opinions as well.
And the hotbox and putting some bank parking there, I guess.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think that would be very goo- good solution to this whole situation.
Yeah, answer to your questions, when, when you add more turns, it create, it creates more conflict point rather than going straight, so that's more safer. So that's why I'm saying it's, it's, I don't see any reason.
So it, it may improve circulation, but it's not a safety issue.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
And then shift the bank parking to that area.
Gonna be able to, there's, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's possible to leave sports bases.
Well, that's what I was trying to look at. That northeastally banked area has how many spaces? Is that six?
Six.
Six.
You might be able to fit four.
Yeah, about three or four.
I mean, if we were, we were able to fit a four, uh that would essentially eliminate the spaces within the entrance driveway. The two would be in the parking lot area. So I think the four we'd be able to remove are the four of the greatest relevance to this.
And I would say, yeah, eliminating the, to Alan's point, I would say eliminating the banked parking spaces nearest to that, we'll call that, right angle elbow is probably the most.
Exactly. I think that would work out nicely.
Can you bring up the comparison image again?
Yes.
Okay, so my question, my question on the comparison image.
Yes, it was A two.
My question on the comparison image is um, from wh- when uh the zoning board of adjustment approved the entry to the hotel uh to the left of the Wawa, it looks like it's in the same, exact same place as now the new Emmens Road entrance to Chick-fil-A. Is that correct?
No, the hotel, this eastern hotel driveway was further east than ours.
This, this entrance right here and this entrance right here.
Correct.
Are they not in the same place?
They are not. Uh the proposed one now is slightly further to the west than the approved hotel driveway.
Further to the west?
Yes, so that hotel driveway wasn't quite aligned with the uh commerce center driveway. Is, as part of this design, we shifted it slightly west to properly align it directly opposite.
Sam, Sam, um when, when the zoning board of adjustment approved uh the, that the application as a ZBA application, did, was a waiver needed because the driveways were close to one another? I, I mean, we have laws and rules about driveways being close to one another on adjacent properties, correct?
I, I don't know, but I know this application doesn't need a waiver for that. I don't remember whether or not the driveway for the proposed hotel needed a waiver because it was closer to the Wawa one. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Curtis, I think it may have been the Wawa entrance, how close it was to Route One.
That, that was an issue. I do remember that. That sounds familiar, Dan. But I was wondering, uh, closest driveway to driveway.
You should check with Vice Chair of the Zoning Board.
I should, I should check with the Vice Chair of the Zoning Board, if he can.
Actually, the Vice Chair was chairing for that application, so.
I, I actually, right, I was, I, I did that. Sorry, gang, I can't remember.
So I'll see if I can find the resolution and see if I can find an answer.
Um, I, I'm okay, Alan, with the, the, the squared-off drive, and I'll tell you why. If necessary, um i- if they keep the banked parking, and I sort of, un- I'm sort of with you on the idea that's a very unsafe place to put additional parking. But I would think that if requested, that they could stripe the, the curvature of the road without changing it, and that would still direct drivers as to how that would work. Uh yes, it does not show up. No, I mean, this, there's no str- striping on here, except uh, my, there's minor locations of striping, but um I, I could see that, that, that being, being striped accordingly.
I think, yeah, we agree completely. I think that's a great suggestion. We will add striping through that driveway.
And I'm okay with this whole curved entry into it. First of all, it's gonna slow people down. God knows, New Jersey drivers need to drive slower, period. Um and uh, you know, my concern is once they enter the site, you know, getting to the, the uh lanes for the drive-through, but it's one of those things. And we talked about this similarly when we did the Starbucks across the street. You know, the first time, you know, it's gonna take some figuring out, but then subsequent visits, people will know where to go. So um my, my concern is for the uh, the, the driver that's, you know, the first time entering or traveling through New Jersey and wants to stop here and being able to figure out where to go and how to do it.
So Curtis, good memory. There was a waiver that was requested from, I won't go through the section number, but it's for the number of driveways. Uh where two or more driveways connect to a single site to any road, a minimum clear distance of two hundred feet along the right-of-way line shall separate the closest edges of any two driveways. Uh that distance was not maintained for the proposed Wawa lot, so design waiver was required for that. So there was a waiver required regarding the driveways for the Wawa.
Okay. Let's move on.
I have one more way to start a professional planner. Be very little variance regularly, so it should be quick.
Be- before we move on, I just want to summarize what was just talked about to make sure we have it right, which is to move the hotbox, right?
We're going to explore the, explore. Transformer hotbox, yes.
Um potential switching the four bank parking to a different site, anything else in, in that series?
No, they, and also the.
And the striping, okay. Uh that's fine, tha- thank you.
Oh, one other question on that. How common is it for Chick-fil-A to always request bank parking? Is that common for you to do this?
It's not as common, uh it's in the past, and I think it will be in the future, only because of Mr. Martinez testifying to we're seeing an explosion in the popularity of the restaurant company. So I, I think going forward, you may see more of that. As they know, we've grown in the sites, right? Uh some of the sites that Mr. Martinez described earlier, they're, they were overpart by a couple of years in. Uh so this is something I think you'll see more of going forward. Is that fair, John?
Uh state your qualifications, please.
Yep, uh David Locke again, BLOZH with Colliers Engineering and Designs. Uh licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh I have a bachelor's degree in urban planning and environmental design from the University of Buffalo. Uh been testifying since two thousand ten uh as a professional planner, testified, testified before over a hundred planning and zoning boards all across New Jersey and was once a consultant to the.
And your license is current in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we accept this, we accept the.
Qualifications.
Again, the property is in the B-two zone. It is a permitted use by right. There are no variances being requested. Uh with this application, we do have some design waivers or exceptions that are being requested. Uh which I will throw in testimony on that quickly. Uh it definitely can be granted by the board under Section fifty-one B of municipal land use law. Uh where it says that a design exception can be granted if the literal enforcement is impractical or will exact an undue hardship because of peculiarly conditions on the property. And there is case law on uh, on the granting of exceptions, um which is the Garofalo v Burlington case, which uh the court said that a waiver is simply an acknowledgement by the board that the conditions as proposed are acceptable and satisfactory as designed. So that's what I think we have here for all of the conditions which the engineer went through. Uh great detail on the reasons why we're requesting these waivers. Uh so I'll go through them again quickly. The first one was uh where a loading berth is required. Uh we're requesting not to have a loading berth. The deliveries will come in off-hours so that you don't need a separate designated area for that. They can just come in and park next to the building, bring in the deliveries and then leave. So uh no, no need for that one. You heard testimony about the number of parking spaces. We are requesting an ex- excess of parking spaces. I think we're at sixteen more when you do the math than, than what's required. Uh some of those being banked, some of them being counted duplicate for the EV spaces. So uh there is testimony. We, we want to make sure there's enough parking. We don't want to have any parking overflow onto adjacent sites, so that's the reason for requesting the excess. We really want to make sure there's, there's adequate. There's two waivers requested for the lighting. Uh again, this is just uh uh trying to juggle the different requirements of the zoning code. Uh where we have minimums, maximums, and averages that are required. I think we did the best we could to try to accommodate that. I think we have a safe design. And uh I think your board professionals are okay with this. Uh so we are requesting a waiver for those uh exceptions. The wall signage, uh we have two proposed wall signs, one on the, the call it the south side facing Route One, one on the easterly or northerly side facing Emmens Drive. Both of those signs are slightly larger than fifty square feet, uh fifty-eight square feet. When you look at the lettering, the lettering is about two feet. It's the, the uh, the logo of the C for the chicken. C logo, it looks, it, it's five feet tall. It's a lot larger than the rest of the lettering. It's just the way that their, their branding uh operates. If you were to shrink that sign down, it would be unreadable. So I think we really do need that size signage, particularly given the setbacks from those two roadways. You need to be able to see that those signs. So we are requesting both the size and the number of signs, I think, uh and I think those are approved. And then the freestanding sign, we are requesting a number of waivers there. We have the logo on the Wawa monument, uh freestanding sign at the corner of Emmens Drive and one, which is not on this property, so it's on the adjacent property. On this property, we're requesting another freestanding monument sign, eight feet tall, where only four feet tall is, is permitted. And as you heard the engineer testify, we really need that extra height to get above the landscaping to provide visibility as people are coming up, uh Route One, turning onto Emmens Drive or coming from Emmens Drive the other way to see that sign and know exactly where they're supposed to turn, just to avoid any confusion. So for waste, weight binding, we really want to make sure that that sign is visible, people know where they're going. The instructional signage, again, the ordinance allows for a two-square-foot maximum for the uh instructional signage onsite. We're requesting three square feet, so instead of one foot wide sign, we're one and a half by two. Slightly larger, really imperceptible difference to the average person on the site. Uh just gives a little better visi- visibility of those signs, ma- makes them uh more, more noticeable. And then the outdoor um paving, we're required to have uh pavers for the sidewalks and, and walkways. We have a stamped concrete, if you will, instead of a paver, so it's a little more durable, long-lasting. Gives you the similar, a similar appearance, but technically we need a way from that. And I believe that was all of them. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to go into more detail on any of those.
Could, could you go back to what you cited for Garofalo?
Which one?
Garofalo. In terms of the standard, I, I don't think that's cool. I don't, I don't, I don't. Garofalo, yeah, I.
Oh, Garofalo?
Yeah, did you get that, that out of Cox?
Yes, that's out of Cox.
I mean, that, that's just a very short section from Cox.
Yes, it is.
And it should be ignored by the board.
I have no problem with that. I go by the municipal land use law standard, which says uh literal enforcement would be impracticable or undue hardship. I think we meet that standard in each one of these waivers.
Yeah, thank you.
I agree with you, the Garofalo, we, we can, we can ignore that.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Question for our planner, I read this a lot here, for one more clarification. Uh any question for the panel?
Uh I just have one question for you. Um in terms of the wall signage, would you, do you believe that the wall signage is proportional to the building itself and not overpowering?
Yes, I do. I do believe that they are very proportional to the building, the wall, the, the facade that they're being mounted to. I think they're in a, in good scale and conformity.
Right.
Similar to the Wawa, I think you have very similar uh scalability there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, uh again, the papers, you weren't gonna say that we have to have pervious or impervious papers? I'm not sure whether.
It's uh, section two hundred dash thirty-six point one establishes that impervious surfaces shall be used for all drives and parking areas. Impervious surfaces shall be used for all other paved areas.
Okay.
Pervious is required if it's not a.
Right, so, uh okay, so it's basically more for water infiltration?
Yeah, I would say for water infiltration, yes.
So the stamped concrete, while it might look like paper, doesn't achieve that.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Um and as the engineer mentioned, we are still decreasing the amount of impervious surfaces on the site for what was previously approved for the hotel. So I think the net water infiltration is going to be greater than what was previously approved in either case.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just, uh just want to point out one thing. Um so the, the total building square foot is actually five thousand three hundred and thirty-two square feet. On our plans, we show it as five thousand two hundred and, I think, twenty-six. Basically, a hundred and six increase, uh and that is due to the fact that I talked to the architect today. Uh and they, they need to increase the, the square footage of the building by such uh to kind of get some um current design elements, uh that particularly currently, as you heard Mr. Martinez say, uh they're constantly remapping everything. So to make sure that this site gets the current, you know, bells and whistles, uh and due to some utilities, we just need to increase that a little bit. Uh it doesn't affect anything, doesn't uh affect any um impervious coverage, uh setbacks. Subsequently, the, the waiver we're asking for, we need one more parking space, or we're technically decreasing the, the waiver that we're asking for. Uh and that, that just want to put that on the record, uh that the next plans will have that uh correct square footage on it, um but just want to make that.
Okay, a- and, and the new size of the building is five thousand two hundred and thirty-three square feet?
Five, three, three, two?
Or five, three, three, two?
Oh, yes, correct. Five, three, three, two.
So, so you waive for the extra parking spaces is one less than, okay. Yep.
And also, we'd like to ask, I'd be happy to answer any questions or have any of my staff answer questions if more happen.
Yeah, um we're gonna hear from our professionals now.
I could ask a question first. David, David, uh I'm going back to the Wawa application.
Yes.
Signage, Wawa, building sign at Wawa, was that a waiver?
I believe that probably was a waiver, yes.
Is that the proportion of that sign in relation to the Chick-fil-A sign? Yet I'm also reflecting that um, all the signage on the buildings of Windsor Green, which are more distant from US Route One. Um, I, they, I think they're conforming to our code. I, I mean, I can't think of any large signs over at Windsor Green that are as big as requested a Chick-fil-A building sign.
Uh, that one I would be unfamiliar with. Uh, it looks like the Wawa application did require waiver relief for both the number of signs on the Wawa building itself. So they had proposed two signs where there's only one would be permitted. Uh, there's also a waiver requested for the area of those signs as well, as well as the letter height. So.
And the zoning board granted that?
That was granted as well, yes. Uh, the the waiver that I really focused on in preparation for this hearing tonight would be the monument sign that was previously associated with that hotel. So I guess I'm kind of hopping into my memo here. Should I jump into it? Why not? So I I had a memo, I had actually two memos, one dated February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four, and one dated February twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, which is supplement. Uh, those memos provided a little bit of background information on this property, as well as what that prior approval was. Uh, that was back in two thousand and twenty in front of the zoning board of adjustment. Uh, that memo also discusses the master plan. It raises a number of issues that we wanted the applicant to touch upon, which I believe the applicant has largely addressed. Uh, starting with the waiver relief for the signage, long story short, I really have no objection to the waivers which are being requested with this application. First off, regarding the monument sign, I do see the need for an additional monument sign along Emmens Drive to direct traffic into and out of that driveway. Uh, the proposed sign does require a waiver for its height. Uh, I am happy to see though that the um sign is just about the same height of what was otherwise approved. I think it was around eight feet versus seven point three, three feet. The wall mounted signage, uh, originally when this application came in, there was signage on all four facades. Uh, we'd requested that that be removed, only two entrances, with the applicant did obliged to. Uh, I do agree with the applicant's planner that those signs are proportional to the facade area based on a rough calculation. Um, they're slightly less than five percent of the facade area, which is usually a magic number I always like to look for. The sizes of those attached signs are also driven by that logo. Uh, specifically, we measure signage based on a box of the total sign area because of that chicken logo, which is the C as well as what they call the comb on top of it. That's the red floppy part of a chicken. That increases that required, that that measured signage height. So otherwise, I do find that the signs are proportional to the size of the building. There is no base behind it. So thankfully, that script of the sign is relatively open. So I had no objection to that. Also, I had no objection to the instructional signage request as well. I do think that instructional signs that are clear and legible for the site are essential for proper circulation. That's essentially all I had. Uh, if anybody has any questions for me, um, regarding any of the other aspects of this application, planning, zoning, um, I'm sure that the other professionals will touch on those other waiver requests, but I wanted to specifically address signage.
You, you, you covered all of the waiver requests under your purview, David?
I never really know if it's my purview or not, uh, but I did address the ones under signage. Um, that would include the freestanding signage, the wall mounted signage and the instructional signage. Regarding the pervious, use of pervious pavers, um, parking, loading and circulation, as well as lighting, typically you defer to the other experts on those. Uh,
Okay.
Regarding the use of pervious pavers, this application, I will add, does decrease the pervious coverage of not necessarily what was on the site, which is true, but also what was previously approved at that hotel. It's a slight decrease. It goes from thirty eight point four percent to thirty seven point seven percent. So that's at least a step in the right direction.
Yep. Okay, and and no, so no issues?
No issues on my end.
Okay. Great. Any questions for David? No, oh, you're good.
Yeah, I I had no objection to the trash being uh, picked up four times a week. Thankfully, the closest dwelling is going to be about eight hundred feet away. Yeah, I had no, I had no objection.
Forget we're only on six days as well.
So good luck.
Can we request the the garbage truck not to back up so no beeps are heard? I'm kidding.
Um, we can't cancel everything.
Yeah, I just go over your, your second memo on the flags, not to beat a dead horse, but basically, you talk, it's talking about a sign. Okay. And it's saying that a national flag is not considered a sign, so it's permitted. It doesn't fly, but it really says nothing about the pole. And the pole cannot be recognized by height. When you read your definition.
Well, it says national state, county or municipal flags are not considered flag signs and are not prohibited by this ordinance.
And that's, that's true.
Yeah.
The flag is not prohibited by the ordinance. It doesn't say anything about the flag pole because you could put a, it says a sign that's mounted on a freestanding pole or other support. Okay. Yeah, the flag itself is not considered the sign, and that's what this is directed to. It doesn't say anything about the supports of having to meet any ordinance standards. That's my interpretation.
So. So your interpretation would be that the flag itself is subject to the flag area regulations, but the flag pole would still be measured by flag signage?
I'm saying that the flag itself is permitted. Okay. Uh, national flag is permitted. But the pole itself is, I think, still comes under the regulations, very least defined.
I mean, this is really Sam's call as his zoning officer, and as he indicated previously, um, he's interpreted this as uh, is the height restriction doesn't apply to the pole.
It, it, now, Sam, is that because the flag and the pole are kind of like considered one structure?
Correct, and we've never, in the thirty five years I've been with the township, regulated the height of a flagpole anywhere.
So I'm sure we have car, I don't know about in West Windsor, but in Lawrenceville, there must be a car dealer with a flagpole above fifty feet. Or if, you know. Hey?
I don't know. The flag shop over Carnegie Center and some of those office buildings, I mean, those office buildings are what, three, four stories high? Those flagpoles are pretty high up there with those office buildings. And they're, they never come in for waivers. We've never had any issues with them at all.
I, I, I think that it's something that should be considered, really, because somebody, you know, what is wrong with the highway? They say, oh, this is great, they got a pick and flip sign. I'm gonna put up a hundred foot sign, I'm gonna put up a flag that's going to be, you know, twice as large as that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree at all. I, I I don't always love large American flags on highways. Um, I make me, make me sound not patriotic, but.
They're just, they're just advertising, right?
That's basically what it comes down to.
Yeah.
It is. I, and so I would agree with you. I think uh, uh,
Well.
I think it'd be worthwhile to investigate that.
Okay, well, the township will consider and take that up, but for this application, the the view is that the flag and the flagpole are one structure and, okay. So.
We actually had a case in one of my other municipalities where there's a fifty foot flagpole that was required or proposed. There is a variance that was sought for. The objecting attorney to that application said it was a principal use in the site, therefore required a D six height variance. And the judge initially, the first judge, agreed with them. And then it was overturned and the appeal court ripped that other judge to shreds. But yes, uh, it's something that should be definitely.
Okay, uh, who wants to go next? Quasi? Yeah, you're up.
Sorry. Yeah, this is Quasi Musu, traffic, uh, traffic engineer for the township. I do have to comment. Uh, the first one relates to the video file we requested to get a feeling how the track through lanes will operate at any other New Jersey Chick-fil-A's. So we did receive a video, but the problem is we think that the video was filmed during the non-peak hours. So we didn't see any cues. Uh, if you could please uh, put a stamp, like what time the video was taken and the date.
John Martinez again, to respond to that. That video was sent to you again, it wasn't necessarily to describe what's going to happen with this agency, to understand how the operation works. The video itself was taken from the store, I believe, in North Carolina.
Okay.
Uh, and so I'm not necessarily able to go back figure out if that could, I can try. But I, again, that's just more for, for your consultants.
We're having a representation of how to look at your.
Yeah.
If it would just show generally.
The operations. Okay. All right, so see if what, what further information if you could gather for that video. See the source, okay. All right, and the second one is a minor comment. There was an error in the signage, W eleven two, because new M T C D changed the dimensions. See if you could please revise it. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question for you both. So you're in agreement with the traffic study that was done?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that there will be no backup onto Emmens Drive from this property?
Correct. That's one of the reasons they circulated that right through lanes wrapped around the property.
Right, so that's why you have the double, you have fifty.
And double loaded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, want to Dan or Fran? Fran?
Because mine's easy. Good evening. My, uh, this is Dan Dubermalsky, landscape architect for the township. Uh, my report stated February twenty eighth. Uh, there were four co- uh, comments. First one's just indicating that the, this does not affect the green belt and that the tree removal is minimal. Um, and was already anticipated with the hotel proposal. The second one was indicating that the layout was very efficient uh, for, with the use of pavement and in my opinion, very addressed the aesthetic concerns we had and appreciate that the applicant and their consultants worked with us to try and get through all the challenges that were associated with this application and this type of use. Uh, the third one is just indicating that the landscape that they're proposing is compliant with the code requirements. And the final is indicating that they did have several favorable green building checklist elements uh, implemented with this project. Any questions?
Any of the waivers that they're requesting, any issues with, anything falls under your purview?
No, I, I, I don't have any issues with them, I think, but they, they gave very good testimony with the rationale for those, and I think that was compelling and made sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dan? Okay, Fran, you're up.
Good evening. Francis Guzik, township engineer. Uh, referring to the memo of February twenty eighth. Um, a number of the comments have been touched upon or addressed by the testimony by Mr. Martinez, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Downey. Uh, also, some of the waivers reiterated by uh, Mr. Block. So, um, I'll just stick to those things that really I haven't heard anything about. So in the report on page three, comment one point oh six, uh, was looking for testimony on the potential need for any new amended or revised easements over the property. Um, I believe one was discussed about a potential agreement with the center owner to uh, route one south, but um, I don't know if it also affects anything with the cross access with the Wawa or any shared parking agreements, et cetera.
We acknowledge there, there will be speeds required if some already exist. We'll provide those to your board attorney for review.
Okay, okay, but none of those would affect them. Let me give it.
Judgmental effect or any effect that I'll possibly give.
Okay. Thank you, um. Uh, comment two point oh seven about uh, access and circulation, um, was about potential title, titled thirty nine enforcement for the property if there was a potential need for it. And I think the only thing I really heard tonight was the potential for if any cars were left in the parking lot after hours that would interfere potentially with deliveries. Um, so I don't know if Chick-fil-A enforces towing for vehicles left overnight, if they interfere with operations or if they would be in need for Title thirty nine for have police.
Title thirty nine, sure, I didn't do the Wawa application, but I'm sure they did, um, doing several recently. Wawa always agrees to that, so Chick-fil-A would do it as well if the town still desires.
Okay. Hey. Um, comments three point oh two and three point oh three are just some technical issues that are recommended as conditions related to the stormwater management for the site, but otherwise, as you heard, basically, the reduction in the pre-existing condition by the demolition and the reduction in proposed parking from the approved hotel, basically, is how they obtain compliance with the water quantity, quality and uh um, recharge, basically, um. So that's considered addressed uh, under utilities, there's a couple conditions, uh, one relative to the existing sewer main on the site that's going to be shared with the discharge for the Wawa. Uh, right now, we have a tentative uh, agreement with Wawa that they're going to come out and televise that line, but in case of course, something happens and Chick-fil-A moves forward first, there's a need for the township to be sure that that main is satisfactory. So there's a recommended condition for that. And then down in section six are four general comments, which are typical conditions recommended for approval for projects. Um, any of the prior comments that I had that were recommended as conditions to the board, I've heard one of the professionals indicate they had no objection or were otherwise planning to obtain those conditions or satisfy those conditions, so.
Okay. And any of the waivers they're asking for, not a problem?
No, no, no objections to any of the waivers requested. Most of them are consistent with other applications for similar reasons related to parking, average lighting levels, the intersection lighting, et cetera.
And they agreed to get the outside agency approval?
Yeah, that was one of the earlier comments I heard from Mr. Kelly.
Jerry, we'd also want to cite the off-track road assessment fee contribution and the affordable housing fee contribution as two conditions.
Okay. Are affordable housing to be paid by the hotel, would be an offset or a?
They would have had to pay the one and a half, or what is it, two and a half percent, I believe it is, yes. They haven't paid yet. They didn't pay their off-track fee or anything.
Okay, um. Now, does the applicant have any issues with our consultants, township consultants on any, anything they've said, mentioned, so on so forth?
No issues whatsoever.
Okay.
Did you just want to read Tim Lynch's report into the?
Oh, yeah, thanks, thank you, great. I just want to read into the record. I was, there was testimony earlier that um Chief Lynch had approved, you know, your changes mods, but I'll read it into record anyway. Memo from Chief Lynch, dated January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. Um, the updated template shows limited access to the building with the West Windsor ladder truck. Uh, the applicant's installing fire suppression system inside the building. Uh, there's no fire risk assessment noted. Um, what a supply for fire protection, the site plan lists a single hydrant located within the parking lot median directly across from the proposed location of the F T C, which is adequate. A lockbox to allow immediate access to the fire department shall be installed next to the sprinkler closet. And he concludes that the applicant has satisfied all comments made by the Fire Marshal's Office, and we recommend approval. Okay.
Tim Lynch speaking.
Yeah. Yep. Um, anybody have any further questions? Um, anybody have any further questions, issues?
Yeah, I've got a question for John. And and I sometimes this happens on applications, but not always. Did you inform us of hours? I know about the Sunday, but did you inform us about the other hours of operation? What which are which is?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, six AM.
Okay.
To ten PM.
Okay. Okay, because I did notice on sheet C eleven that the the signage elevation said six thirty. But I'd also, I I'd like to give the applicant freedom if he wants to open earlier, and I'll tell you why. Um, in New Jersey, people start driving at very earlier hours to get to New York, to Philadelphia, to commute within the state of New Jersey, as well as uh, day commuters going distances, getting off at New Brunswick to come down Highway one to avoid the the massive tolls on the turnpike to get to Philadelphia. So there is a good amount of traffic, believe it or not, between the hours of five and six in the morning on U S Route one. So I'd like to give the applicant freedom if he wants to open up earlier. Are we nailing him into an opening time?
Actually, you're not. I mean, it could be twenty four hours if they want to. They wouldn't have to come back to this board. They're just mentioning what their hours of operation.
Like on zoning applications.
And if they listen to Rob and open on Sundays, they still won't have to come back to us to get permission to open on Sundays.
I mean, some, I, Sam, I know in the past on some applications, we've tried to nail down hours. And I want to make sure that they had.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My question, why includes on Sunday?
Oh, no.
So, um, I'll give you when the founder started his business, he operated a twenty four hour a day, seven day a week diner in his brother. It was very successful. And then they realized it was so successful, they said, hey, we don't have a second store, we're doing great. So they opened a second location. But then it was two people that spent, like, one person operating each one twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And they ran themselves into the ground. And so they decided, we can't do this. We got, we can't go all night. We can't go seven, uh, seven day a week. So this particular diner was out in front of New Ford factory, the build after World War Two down in Atlanta. The least busy day was Sunday. And so they say, oh, man, shit, you know, we're just going to close Sunday completely, allows us to go to church, allows us to spend some time with the family. And involved in town, which is very important for our operations. You know, the stores that go twenty four seven, when do they maintain their? How do they do that? Can't, because you're always in business here. On Sunday, even though we're closed, you won't be selling chicken. You'll still see people there doing things that should be done, like maintaining equipment, changing filters, power washing, cleaning up. Uh, but that's the major part. It allows folks time, uh, time to do that.
Hey, John, can I correct the record just because Sam's comment, I promised my wife I'd eat there no more than every other day. And so that Sunday really screws things up for me because on Sunday, the door doesn't follow. Are you done? Can I ask John a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
The board will just indulge me, and and you brought it up. My office happens to be in Lawrenceville, and I live not too far off Baker Basin Road. So I drive there many times during the day. You met? Yeah, my my pleasure. I I try to avoid it. Uh, I sometimes I drive, believe it or not, to Langhorne because I'm I'm disenthralled with that whole circulation problem. You mentioned earlier that you, as a good corporate citizen stakeholder, you know, you're going to be acquiring, it's good virtue, and you're going to be acquiring a piece of land that might help with that circulation. Can you just tell me how will land affect the traffic circulation in your view? Like, what would, what would that do to Baker Basin Road? Because that'll bring me back.
He's a big fan of that intersection.
All the time.
So so unfamiliar with that. So I was involved in designing the approvals of the original Chick-fil-A. And the site itself, where we were, we were the last person in the application.
Yes.
The dump is already there. Wawa was already there. The TD Bank is supposed to go on that block.
Right.
And so, uh, that we needed, we needed some more parking there, but no parking. So we previously made a man where we asked a little bit of all all area parking for for that. TD Bank was allowing us to use essentially some of that part. So by getting control of that entire TD parcel now, we can add more parking. We can also have additional drive through lanes there to help reduce the length of the drive through queue. So so we can't necessarily affect cars coming in and out of that.
Yeah, no curb cuts.
It's kind, yeah, that's kind of fixed.
Yeah.
But on our site itself, we're doing what we can to improve that customer experience.
I'm rooting for you, and I'm thrilled. Hopefully, you're coming to West Windsor. Great.
Um. Any other questions? Okay. Um. Do you have anything else?
We've got the answer.
Okay. I'll open it up to the public now to comment on this application. Please step up to the microphone, state your name, address for the record and make your comments. Anybody? Okay. Somebody?
I see only one public.
He's he's more private.
He's protecting the public. Okay, so, um, no public comments on this application. So. I'll any, any deliberation?
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, public comments closed. Any deliberation, anybody? If not, if no deliberation or questions or any issues, I'll entertain a motion to approve application P V twenty three dash O seven
so moved.
with the conditions discussed, um, exploratory things to be looked at and so on and so forth.
So moved.
Okay, Jordan, second by.
Thank you, Curtis. I'd like to second that.
Second by Rob. Sam, can you please call the roll for this?
Wait a second, wait a minute. We're approving all the uh waivers.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I I said conditions, additions, waivers, comments, exploratory changes that we that were discussed. Jerry has taken um, great notes.
Yes, now, uh, all of the conditions are pretty self explanatory, basically laid out in in Francis's memo. And then we have the one memo from the Tim Lynch about the lockbox. The one condition that sign detail, which is point number two in Quasi's memo. And I've added I've added the following conditions in addition to the ones that are laid out in those minutes. They'll they'll move the transformer and hot box and will work with the township professionals on relocation.
Which includes part of the four bank parking spaces, so it's part of that then move.
And there's a reason I can't do it, just to be clear.
Yeah, it's exploratory. You're going to look and see.
Utility company.
Right, it can't be done.
Thank you.
Right, it's not set in stone that they will do that. They're going to explore the possibility of doing.
We want them to move those four bank spaces. Um, I thought certainly the advice from Quasi was that it was a safe condition the way it was. So the board will have to decide that.
We've identified no other area to put them other than where the transformer hot box are. We can put them there, we will. If not, we're proposed to stay where they are.
Okay, okay.
And again, they're banked spots. You might not.
They may never use them since they're already over the.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, in terms of the flag. Um. I know the mayor had suggested that the applicant work with our landscape architect. But they had offered just to illuminate it from the ground. Seems to me the clearer thing is just to illuminate it from the ground.
Yes.
Okay. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion by Jordan, second by Rob to approve with conditions, waivers, exploratory comments, changes, mods. Um, please call the roll, Sam.
Olivera, yes.
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 Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Motion, uh, application approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Our rush move is tentatively April third.
Me adjourned.
Uh, mo- motion adjourned.
Second. Just to let you know how fair I am. They turned down my sign. And I'm so fair.
Hi, Jerry.